There is no password, it's just the meeting ID and that was in the agenda. I can read you the number if you like. Leona was sending out a link as well. Do you want me to? Want me to read you the number? One of us is breaking up. Eight seven eight, six one seven eight, six one seven eight. And nine eight six eight, and then nine eight six eight. There's 11 numbers. Yep. No password. All right, see you soon. That was Paul. Oh hey, Amy. All right, I'm gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order. Paul should be here for, there he is, forthwith. So call the meeting to order at 6:07, as we have just been reminded. This meeting is being recorded. If you are calling in using your phone, to mute, it's, or unmute, it's star six, and if you'd like to raise your hand, star nine, if you're on the phone again. Also, we'd like to ask that if you're not participating as a city council member or part of the agenda item that's under discussion, to please turn off your video. This will allow other speakers to filter to the front of the pages. Are there any changes to the agenda that we need to address?
There is only an informational item added after the final presentation on Tuesday.
Very good. All right, hopefully you guys have had a chance to review the consent agenda, and if that is the case, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion to approve the consent agenda. Items A through F as presented.
First and second, is there any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, and then I just did also want to point out that one of the items on the consent agenda was the new outdoor area that the Walkman's working on. I know that the pictures that were in your packet were pretty incomplete with just the stanchions, but they've done a fine job of creating a space to increase their capacity. And then in addition, the, thank you for approving the right-of-way permit for El Rio so that they can get people back and forth into their new area. And I don't know if you guys have had a chance to walk by and take a peek, but they have done some amazing things with that little bit of space back there. So I'd encourage you to take a look at that if you have a moment. So this is all good news for the applicants, so thank you very much. And as usual, so it sounds like, Leona, that email you said sent that the, the public meetings directive was set to expire yesterday and has been extended until the first?
Until July 1st, correct.
Okay, and then I guess we'll find out at that point whether we'll be meeting in person that day. Let me see if I can pull up some photos for you guys. Leona, if you could give me the opportunity to share my screen. I don't have a picture of the camera, but I did want to show you.
Can you share now?
Yep, I think I got it. So that's the new screen with the, all the wires. Can you guys see that before I?
Yeah.
So, put the behind-the-walls kit in there. So these items down at the bottom, that's the Cat 5 cable, then the USB cable for the camera. So let's see what else is on here. So added plugs behind the TV and everything just zips in real nice back behind there. The camera that you guys were willing to invest in is really cool. It does have the option of a 360 view of the room, or, and/or will track audio and highlight those that are speaking. So we're moving ahead on that. So if we do need to move ahead with a hybrid meeting next month, we are prepared for that. And then as you can, as you saw on that picture, that will also allow us the chance to put the packet up on the wall for our gallery. So we do have, there have, there were some comments submitted, and I would hope, hopefully you guys have read them all.
The comments were put under the public hearing items.
Okay. Very good. Okay, and we are a little bit ahead of time for the first public hearing. Let's see if there's anything else that we can address.
Public comment.
Oh, how about that? Hey, Mary, would you like to introduce yourself and provide some comment?
Yes, thank you. Let me get my technology in order here. I'm looking at the agenda on my pad and using my phone. Good evening, Mary Rapar, Home Valley. I have three items for a public comment. I would like to ask our city council to consider passing a resolution that we make Juneteenth a holiday. And I'll be presenting this to the commissioners, Comoriano County Commissioners too. I think it is time that we honor emancipation instead of forgetting our history. So I think we can put up flags for that day. We certainly do need something to honor emancipation of Black Americans who made this country great through their sweat and labor and death. So that's something I want to bring to you, and I hope you put it on a future agenda. Secondly, fireworks? Why are we spending money on fireworks instead of spending it on COVID-19 stuff like swabs and labs and everything else? I spoke to Kirby Richards the other day, and we have about 700 COVID tests available for a community of 12,000 in our county. But she also told me that COVID-19 tests in our community are also on demand. So if you feel you need one, go and get one. I had a medical procedure on Tuesday, and I got mine on Sunday, which was negative, thank you. And so now we can go to our public health and ask for one. And third, I saw that you have the Gorge Commission Management Plan on your agenda. I would like you all to make comments that work with the Gorge Commission on a regional basis on any thing that we do in our environment. And the environment doesn't, the environment doesn't stop at boundaries. It, it is, it is regional and it is a cohesive ecosystem. I'm making my comments. It's an enjoyable 500-page read for anyone who wants to do it. And that, but I really urge our community to work on a regional basis with any comments that we make about the environmental parts of the management plan. And that was it, but again, for the Juneteenth celebration, we already put up the flags for June 14th for Flag Day. And I think making Juneteenth a holiday, Amco Bank is observing it for, as I found out today. And more and more corporations and other businesses are. So it is time that our state observe the Juneteenth as a holiday also. Thank you very much. Bye.
Thank you, Mary. Would anybody else like a chance to address the council? All right, thank you very much. And we are at our 6:15 mark. Leona, I don't have my cheat sheet, so I guess I need to open. And then listen, and then close, and then council comments. Is that about right?
Yep.
All right, I would like to open the public hearing for item 5A at 6:16. Go ahead, Leona.
I'm gonna hand off to Ben.
Very good. Congratulations, Ben. We're all very excited for you and Laura. Can't wait to see more photos.
Yes, thank you very much. So that happened this last week, so I have been busy with that. Fortunately, we have a village here that's helped with this, this permit proposal and to present it to you. So to, I know to introduce some of that, Leona covered the planning commission meeting for us last Monday. She has a memo to you summarizing that planning commission meeting. I will refer to that some in the staff reports. Mike Beck, one of your planning commissioners, is here to help convey any messages that I'm not aware of from that meeting. We do have representative of the ownership group that's here as well, Dean Maldonado. And then we should have on the line our outside consultant for critical areas review, in addition to any public comment that may be part of this. So we have a village, and it may take a village to go through this packet. It's a big one for you. It starts on page 34 with Leona's memo, and then it continues all the way down to the end of the draft permit approval on 373. So it's big, there's a lot in there. I'm gonna try to break it out as much as I can into manageable chunks, and we can let the conversation go wherever it needs to, to go after that. So some, some helpful pages as we scroll through. I've got an advantage because I've got a bunch of documents up to scroll through. Hopefully, you know, I can go slow for everyone else, but page 35 of your packet that was sent out tonight includes a general site plan that shows the, the property, the public access areas that have been, that exist currently, and some changes that are proposed for you. So that might be a good one to bookmark that we can refer back to. Similarly, there's a landscape plan proposal that was submitted to us last night. That's on page 340. That, that may be helpful when we get to those discussions. My memo is on page 166, and that follows the one written comment that we received from Mary Rapar, which was on 165. I'm sure that she will refer to that when the public hearing time comes. So getting into this proposal, that the first chunk of your packet is exactly what was presented to you at the last meeting. That's from pages 3, or I'm sorry, 36, all the way down to where my memo, or where Mary's comment letter would be. All of that is the original application packet that was submitted. Everything that follows that is some additional information that's been added for the record here. I talk about what that information is in my memo on page 166, which I'll pull up and give everyone a chance to get into.
Okay, so are there any comments from the public?
I'll still roll through some of this, Scott.
Oh, okay.
So just, the additional information that was submitted for the record here includes the Phase 2 environmental site assessment. This one was mentioned at the last meeting. I think it was Robert talked about it. The site assessment that was done by Mal Foster Long, he said there's no concern for contamination here. They did testing. All of that testing is included in the packet. I think that it's included in there twice because we also asked them for a summary of the public meetings and public visioning process that was funded by the Environmental Protection Agency for this project when it was still under county ownership. And so that's also included as a new submittal. The critical areas report has been updated from what was given to you guys at the last meeting. And then they have submitted that landscape plan that I had also referenced before. What you're also seeing is a review by the city engineer. This is mostly provided as a, an informational item to show that this is really close to obtaining approval from the engineering department. The civil engineers that they have are working with our engineers, and there's a few things that they want to see incorporated in, in there. The critical areas review by Kevin Gross with Olson Engineering is part of that. It identifies some deficiencies in that. Generally, we're at a point where the city and the applicants really understand where the impact areas are. And now we need to get a more in-depth proposal about what the mitigation and restoration requirements are for the site. So it's moving forward, but there are some needs that we have on that to give them the administrative approval that we're proposing on this. The draft shoreline substantial development permit is included in there. That's on pages 356 through 373, and that's one that I'm sure that we can talk about a little bit more. The draft permit was submitted to the planning commission to assist with their discussions. And so it's been amended to reflect their discussions. As we scroll through that, there's some text in there that's blue. That's changes since the planning commission meeting. There are some other changes in there based on the comments we received on the state's, the State Environmental Policy Act's determination. So when we get big projects like this, we have to, to review them, make a threshold determination of whether we believe the project is, is likely to have a probable significant impact on the environment. And we review the earth, the air, the water, the traffic, the housing, parking components of a site. They have to submit a 11-page checklist for us to go through this. So we reviewed that. We said that, yeah, generally, we agree. We've determined that this project is likely to have a prob, is not likely, I'm sorry, to have a probable significant environmental impact. In order to come to that conclusion, we attached 15 mitigation measures to it. We send that out to the world. The world provides their comments back. In this case, we got comments from the Departments of Transportation, State Department of Transportation, the Department of Ecology, and the Department of Archaeology and Historic Preservation. I was able to talk to each of those departments today to get an idea of what they're looking for. So the Department of Transportation is requesting that the projects conduct a transportation impact study specifically for the transportation impact to the state route, Highway 14, and whether a right-turn lane, right deceleration lane for the westbound traffic is necessary. So on, on this one specifically, the city engineer reviewed this, and, and we asked, well, do we need a transportation impact study for the project? We determined that it didn't, and we were comfortable making the determination of non-significance, that we don't need a transportation impact study. Department of Transportation disagrees, and they say they want one before they can approve it. The, they relied completely on the city. They don't have a separate permitting approval. And so all of their, any requirements that they would have, they're relying on the city for this. So they say they needed more information. The city in its review said we don't need more information. And so that one is really, is in there as draft condition number two on the permit. And that's something for you all to consider whether that's necessary or not. It's been requested by Department of Transportation. The city didn't believe that that was necessary when we reviewed it. Similar discussion, similar balancing act with can draft condition number three. This is a result of the Department of Archaeology and Historic Preservation comments. They reviewed the pre-project cultural resources survey. So they, they go out and they dig test pits, and they determine to the best of their ability what's likely to be under the ground there, and whether they're going to run into either historic area, era, cultural resources like from the mill operation, or prehistoric era cultural resources from the native inhabitants prior to Europeanization. So in this case, they said, they didn't find anything in their pre-project study. They said the project should continue using inadvertent discovery plan, which we have as a condition already. What that means is, hey, we don't expect to find anything. But if you run into a poxherd, or if you run into a bone, all work's gotta stop, and you have to call in the appropriate agencies or tribal entities before the project can resume. That's already part of the project. DAP, or Department of Archaeology and Historic Preservation, says, you know, that may not be good enough. We would like you to develop a monitoring plan and have a cultural resources monitor on-site when they're doing excavation work into the native soils of the site. So there's a significant amount of fill on the site that was put in place when they developed the mill. When you get under that, there's a potential for cultural resources. And so Archaeology and Historic Preservation is requesting that monitoring plan. Again, we reviewed this. We reviewed the report that was submitted, said this is probably good enough. The state disagrees with that, and so they're asking for you to make an additional requirement. Another thing to balance here, whether, whether you want to require that of these applicants or not. Department of Ecology was the, the final commenter on that. Generally, they are the ones that we send these, these permits to after we approve it. And they have to verify that we did everything appropriately according to our code and our program. So talk to them. They don't have a lot of concerns with the use of the project, but there's some in the initial submittal that was just unclear about the landscaping. This is a theme that's gonna come up later with the planning commissions review. And then there was a concern about the phasing, which Ms. Rapar mentioned in hers, and that we can talk through if we need to. Generally, they're getting their comments in on the record there, but they don't see anything out of line, and they're not requesting anything specifically, other than just more detail before we make a decision. So I think that we have a lot of that detail in here for you, and we can talk about anything you wanna get into with that. The last one, and this is the one I feel least comfortable talking about because I wasn't at the planning commission meeting to talk about the changes to that. So these, again, are the changes that are in blue text in the draft decision document on pages 356 through 373. And so I may try to rely on Mike and Leona as much as I can with this. But there's some changes there. They really, it sounds like they had a long discussion about the public access for the site, both the existing and what it should be in the future. And so, and when public access facilities like trails are developed. And so the initial proposal had a seven-year number in there that they need to complete that public access by the time Phase 2 would be occupied, or seven years, whichever sooner. Planning Commission said, no, that's not quite good enough. Let's shorten that up. So they're recommending three years to you guys, and that's reflected in the permit. There's also another condition in there based on how to formalize the public access easements. There's an existing easement that circumnavigates the sites, and they want to make some changes to that. One of the reasons for that is that easement was drawn in without considering where the slopes are on the site. It was just drawn in as if we were doing it at the meeting today. So it ends up being very hard to construct it and potentially impossible to permit the construction of it. So they wanted to change that to continue to provide public access, but do it in a way that's, that's feasible. Planning Commission has some comments on where that public access should be and how to do it. Those are comments that I really think can happen as part of a plat amendment process. This would be where we go in and we erase that original easement, and we draw in the new easement based on something that's more feasible. That would also allow them to erase the lot lines for the three lots that are under this ownership, and replace those with a new lot line that, that's more conducive to the development that they're proposing. So that's a discussion I want you all to be able to have about what our expectations are for public access. And, and then based on that discussion, I would anticipate the next step for that plat amendment review at the following meeting. How am I doing on that, Mike? Okay. The, the last item that they discussed was about screening from adjacent uses or properties. And we've got a draft amendments or a draft condition for that. Change to that would be condition number 14. And this one is intended to really be a bookend on one side of what you guys can require. The, at the time we developed this, it's, it crossed paths with the more detailed landscaping plan that the applicant submitted. And so that one came in last night, and then this, this condition was already included. So on, on one side of the bookend, you have a proposed landscaping plan that you can approve, and say they need to complete the landscaping according to the plan submitted. On the other bookends, you have a requirement to provide photo simulations of the landscaping in 10 years. And that those photo simulations need to show that a certain percentage of that, of the buildings on the site are screened from the view from the fairgrounds. So really, it's prioritizing the public views from the fairgrounds, and, and wants to ensure that this development doesn't impact those. So I anticipate that you guys will have a discussion on that, and that the staff proposal there is treated just as a bookend and not as a real recommended, let's hold them to this. I think that's all that I've really got off the top of my head, and turn it over to you all for, to supplement, either Leona or Mike, or, or council mayor for the next steps.
All right, so I think we still need to have our public comment period. Would anyone like to speak?
Yes, Mary Rapar. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Great, thank you. First, I think you all have to have a real discussion about the phasing. And Mike may be able to give you more information on that, but that was a real topic of discussion because how can you approve phases when you don't know what they're going to be? And regarding the public access, I'm going from memory here. The big, or the longer public access was pink in color on the map that you may be looking at. And it covered what we thought was a longer path to, for people to be able to walk through. And as you know, in our, in our community, we've been trying to get more walking paths and other places for our citizens to enjoy. So the more, the better. And before I trust anybody to say that one path is better than the other, or one path is worse than the other, we need to know the total mileage of, of the proposed path, the brown path that the proponent is proposing, and what the original easement is. And I don't think it should be that easy to change easements, especially existing public easements around a property that could at some future point become part of the city. This isn't a gated community. It should be open access to the public. And one of the reasons that I think that the proponent is trying to change the easement is they want privacy in those south, I wanna say southeast condos that are on their own peninsula almost. And the public should have access to public property, especially if it's going to be at some future, which the proponent also stated, I, if my memory serves, that they might sell some of those condos at a future date to private people. The landscape plan, apparently it's been, I haven't seen it, but at the time that we discussed this, it was not part of any development. And there should be native vegetation plan, and And forgive my drought resistance. My brain is faster than my stylus, so that's drought resistant on my comment number two. Setbacks and buffers should be more clearly defined so we know the actual landmass. And also, there are a lot of wildlife in that area, and I did not see a wildlife survey. And I think that should be something that's mandated and should be a condition of this project. Water uses, I recall a very lively discussion on water uses that we had a few years ago. And no motorized things are allowed on rock ponds. So I think, you know, that should be part of telling people what's allowed, what's not, and signage may be needed. And then number six, there's a peninsula surrounded by water. And I think that permeable surfaces should be used as much as possible to allow for recharging of rocks pond. And hold on, hold on, I have to switch here. And I heard the traffic study comment. And one of the things that we did not hear at the planning commission was how many people can occupy this area? How many residents are there going to be? And until you know that, the population, I think you need, you know, you need a traffic study to see what the impact will be on Rock Creek. Rock Creek tends to make people have a lead foot and because it's so nice and straight. And with more people on it, it could become more dangerous. So I think a traffic study should be mandatory. And I also heard the comment from Ben about the consolid or the fill that was used on that site. And one of the concerns that that raises is whether that fill is consolidated or unconsolidated. Once you start putting weight on fill, that leads to different construction methods. So I will leave that to the engineers, but that is a question that comes up a lot in our area where people fill in holes with a lot of crap. And then you start putting houses on it and you find out that it won't hold, as we found out in our fire hall. So those were the comments I have as of now. And one other thing, Ben, if you could pass my comments on to the planning commission. I thought you weren't coming back, so I sent them to Leanna. But I told the planning commission I would also send them to them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Would anyone else like to comment? Okay, I don't see anyone. Well, I'll give you guys a chance to unmute and get our attention if you'd like a moment to speak.
This is Mike here. I just want to ask if, Mike from the planning commission, I'm here to help provide any comments about the planning commission's comments and concerns we had. I don't know if this would be an appropriate time to speak or if you want me to wait until a little later in the meeting to do so.
Why don't you hold on for now? I want to get to see if we have any more public comment and then we'll go into the rest. So I don't see anyone chiming in, so I would like to close the public comment at six forty. So now let's just start. Well, go ahead, Mike. You're the one that chimed in first. Let's hear what you have to say.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. My name is Mike Beck. I'm the most junior planning commission member, but I was given the task to present our comments to the city council tonight. I'm honored to be here and presenting these. Overall, the planning commission felt that the proposal, you know, met the met the standards of the shoreline substantive or the shoreline management act. And we did have some concerns about the changes to the site detracting from the current uses and enjoyment of the property, diminishing some of the value that's there presently on the site. The blue line edits do, or the blue line additions to the permit do capture fairly accurately our concerns we had in the meeting involving, you know, accessibility and maintaining the public easement throughout the process, not during construction, but providing the ability for the public to continue to use the site once construction phases are completed, even without construction of the formal path that the applicants have proposed. We were concerned, and Mary mentioned it earlier in her comments, about the diminishment of the easement on the property itself. As shown on the maps that were presented to us and probably in the packet, the current easement appears to be twenty feet wide and goes around the peninsula in kind of a perimeter. The proposed changes to the easement seems to diminish those and narrow them and break it up into a fairly disjointed matter. I provided a sketch to Leanna after the meeting that showed kind of how the public currently uses the property. People access the property by walking directly out to the peninsula, directly through the property. But maintaining some of the circulatory elements that the current easement shows would be beneficial to the public. And we felt that if the applicants do want to change the easement, that a balancing of providing a more of a direct circulatory path around the, from the center of the property through the center of the property out to the peninsula and then along the north bit where they have their fire pit proposed, certainly not allowing the public to use the fire pit, but having the ability for people to walk through the site as opposed to out and back or getting stuck somewhere and not knowing where to go. Paths should be accessible to all, accessible to be able, you know, available and accessible for people in wheelchairs, mobility, scooters, people with limited mobility. And providing a direct route would be clearer and easier for people to follow, as well as maintaining some of the current uses on the site that the public already enjoys as kind of the way that the public uses it today. We had concerns about the landscaping. That was a big part of the discussion about how the property would be viewed from the fairgrounds area. We didn't have a chance to see that landscaping plan, but the blue line additions to the permit appear to accurately capture our concerns that we had there. We were concerned about the impact of three-story buildings as viewed from the fairgrounds and what the attraction, the neck, the the changes to the site and how those would diminish the current natural beauty of the property that the public enjoys. We felt that adding a sign, a historic interpretive sign would be a good balancing between the current, the proposed use and how it has historically been used, and that's been added in the permit in the blue line or a blue addition. And then dedicating the easement, like Ben suggested, through the plat amendment process so that it's formalized and it's actually maintained throughout the process, not waiting for an interminable time for it to change or be dedicated in the future. And then also that timelining where they would hopefully be able to pave that path and improve it in a shorter period of time than what was originally proposed would be beneficial to the public as well. And not diminish the use as much as seven years would perhaps do for the public. And I have one other comment that we did not bring up in the meeting, but I do want to share this. They are proposing transient accommodations. And the Americans with Disabilities Act guidelines require at least one of the units, perhaps more than one bedroom in the units to be accessible. And we didn't see any provision for that. And I'm not sure that they have entertained that. But this isn't something that's usually requested in zone. It's not regulated by typical zoning regulations, but the applicant should be considering accessibility. If they are providing transient accommodations, they will need to have at least one accessible unit, perhaps multiple accessible units, depending on the amount of transient accommodations they're going to provide. That should be something the city council should at least consider, perhaps advance to the applicant. But ADA accessibility in transient accommodations is required. I think that's all I've got in terms of my notes. I think that the blue line additions did capture our concerns accurately with those additions that were added. So thank you for the opportunity to present our concerns to the city council.
Thanks, Mike. So Dean, I do want you to know that obviously we're going to give you a chance to weigh in. I hope you're taking some notes and you can address these items at the end of our comments. So I'm not ignoring you over there. I'm pretty sure you want to, you're going to get your thoughts together as we proceed. So obviously we'll get your moment here shortly. Was there anybody on city council that would like to weigh in? How about if I just go down the order? Amy, did you have any thoughts?
You know I do.
Okay.
First, I want to thank Mike and all of planning for doing all of this heavy lifting because I have to say I did not read through all of these pages of documentation. So thank you for doing that for us and you too, Ben and Leanna. I'm really pleased to see that the planning commission focused on access for the public because that's been huge for all of the ten years that I've been on council. That is a running theme is access to the waterfront for the public. And I'm sure Dean, you heard that also envisioning that was done. So that's not new news for anybody here at this table. But I was especially pleased to see the phases shortened or proposed to be shortened so that we can get through it a little bit faster. And I agree that access to the peninsula is huge and I'm looking forward to seeing what we can do about that. So I don't have any real questions. I just wanted to say thank you and let you all know that that my sort of biggest concern or the thing that I'll be watching the most closely will be access for the public to the waterfront. So thanks, Scott, for that.
Thank you, Amy. Robert?
Sure. Ben, just first question is, why did the city not consider imposing the traffic study? What was the basis for that?
Going from memory here about the discussion with our contract engineers. Essentially, since our our traffic modeling is non-existent.
Right.
Our ability to determine that there's an impact to our system is hard to defend. And so if we can't defend it after they give us the study, why put them through the process to go through the study? That's the gist of it. I don't think Tim Shell is on the line here. But if he is, I'd welcome him or maybe Carl remembers something different about that too.
But yeah, I mean, you know, Amy's concern is public access. I'm going to take the flag of public safety in and out of the development, especially along Rock Creek Drive. If we're adding forty-eight bedrooms plus a fifteen thousand square foot venue space, you're potentially looking at any, you know, one time of more than a hundred to three hundred cars. If you add twelve hundred people in a fifteen thousand square foot venue for whatever the event is. So I think that the city needs to impose that traffic study to determine if there's going to need to be either traffic control light or additional work down at Rock Creek to make it accessible. Obviously, we still haven't decided to move the fire hall, so the fire hall would also be, you know, within stone's throw and opposite side of the street, but it's going to create its own impact as well. The shoreline plan doesn't address the building plans though, right? What Mike was bringing up on ADA accessibility units, things like that, we haven't seen those yet. We're just looking at the thirty thousand foot level of the proposed plan, right?
There are some renderings of the plan early on that were part of the last month packet. And so I can try to find the exact page there, but garage below, two stories above garage.
Okay. Infrastructure is, you know, I mean, Carl, have you been tied in on this? Whether or not our water sewer lines that flow to Rock Creek Drive are going to be accessible, they're going to be able to control that usage. Sorry, Carl, I know you stepped away.
I just got back. Sorry about that.
Yeah. So I think from a public work standpoint, Carl, have you had a chance to weigh in on, you know, adding the water sewer connections that are going to be required for the infrastructure here?
So not on this phase. We haven't. I just today got the comments from our contract engineer on some of the water sewer proposals. There is quite a list of comments from him, one from me, and then it's going to go back to their design team to come up with. So that is kind of in its infancy right now.
Okay.
Robert, can I jump in for one second?
Absolutely.
Along those lines, I thought I saw something about private sewer.
Private sewer. Well.
Say that again, Ben?
The public sewer, the private sewer line, the connection for the project would need to come in at a manhole. That's in the engineer's report, which I can find the specific page too when the internet starts working again.
I saw it. Yeah.
And then so there's a private water system past the meter. There's a private sewer system past the main line. Then they are, the engineers are where I guess we are through the SEPA as well, requiring that the stormwater system on the site is owned and maintained in private hands. So the city wouldn't be responsible for maintenance of that.
Well, then, you know, and just Carl, I know you'd be looking at the additional issue of whether or not you're going to have water meters, sewer meters for every one of the buildings.
What is, what's, right now, Robert, what's proposed is one meter for the whole site. And that's like to Ben's point, the way I'm looking at it, Dean, chime in if you want to. But after the meter, it's Dean's, if you will. After the manhole, it's theirs. So that's what I see proposed right now.
Okay. All right. Yeah, I haven't had a chance to read through everything though, because I know you guys have been doing a lot of work on it. I didn't want to sort of get ahead of myself. So those are my initial comments. The dovetail behind Amy.
All right. Thank you, Robert. Paul?
Sure. Yeah. I'd like to echo everything Robert just said about the traffic study that for now, we're going to be planning on putting the fire hall there until something changes and then coupled with the amount of cars that could potentially be there, we need to have a look at it. The other thing is the public access. And now I'm really familiar with this site. I was one of the, I was the instigator on the initial environmental assessment study that was done. And I've crawled all over that site. And I'd also like to say that I'm very experienced in trail building and trail design, that sort of thing. I, unless there's something I am unaware of, some regulation or so forth, it's very feasible to build a trail around the perimeter of that property. I'm sure of it, unless there's some weird thing. Now, a lot of blackberries out there right now. So I've never, I haven't been able to set foot on every square inch of the place, of course. But it will have to be explained to me why it's not feasible to build a trail around it. Because I, from my understanding of that property and trail building, it is feasible. The other thing is, in all the public meetings we've had on that property, well, and at every public meeting we've had, not just on that property, but shoreline access is just beaten home. Stevenson is all about shoreline. And we want shoreline access. The people here do. The proposed change to the public easement that I'm seeing on that map is not, it's a shore point access, but not a shoreline access. And I see a difference there. So I am not on board with the current, with the change as proposed on the access. And that's my primary comment at this moment.
Scott, you're on mute.
I guess I clicked too far away. So thank you, Paul. Annie?
So I'm going to echo everyone else's concerns about shoreline access and traffic patterns and traffic accessibility. And I also want to chime in on Mary Rapar's suggestion about a wildlife impact study. I agree with that, as well as an archaeological study, impact study also. But for transparency's sake, I approached Dean Maldonado. I don't know if he'll even remembers this or even saw it. I think in February of this year to potentially use his space as a venue for another program that I'm involved in called Community Fresh. And I want to bring that to everyone's attention because I don't know if that poses a conflict of interest for me as a voting member of this. of this project on council. So if we could open that up for discussion, if anybody wants to lend anything to that, any insight, that would be greatly appreciated.
Thank you, Annie. I might ask Ken to do a, um, appearance of fairness disclosures process for us on this generally before we, we make any votes.
Right.
Yeah, the appearance of fairness, um, this is a land use matter and so appearance fairness would apply. And, uh, I, I, I'm not sure, uh, if we've gone through this before with this council, but purpose of appearance of fairness is to make sure that you guys can be, uh, fair in your analysis of the project and may, and render a decision without personal bias. So to start, I think, uh, in view of Annie's comment, I think we have to first of all, talk about ex-party contacts in relation to this project. Whether any of the council members, uh, has, has spoken with either proponents or opponents of this project, um, prior to, uh, this hearing. Anybody?
Well, I didn't really speak to Dean Maldonado. I sent him an email inquiry and about the possibility. So, and as I said, he may not even be aware of this at all.
The possibility of the, this project going forward or what?
Of my project utilizing space within the 15,000 foot event venue.
And you, uh, and can you explain your relationship to, uh, the organization?
Yeah. So I am the head of a steering committee for a project called Community Fresh and it's a culinary food education center that's being proposed. We're at a, we're in a feasibility study phase right now. Um, and it will, it requires a, a physical space for us to conduct a culinary center and community center within that culinary center. And so we've been looking for sites for the last two years. And when this one was, was pitched to the city, um, the steering committee wanted to consider it as a, as a potential venue.
Do you have a, um, or is your stake in this organization as a board member of a multi-board group? Or multi-member group?
We don't have a board yet. We're still at the steering committee phase, uh, but there will be a board of directors and I probably would be a board member.
Do you have a financial stake in that group?
Uh, potentially yes. As my, my business, I have an LLC that's being dissolved to create a 501(c)(3). And that business would function inside of this venue. Yes.
Well, you know, I certainly, I think that, that does raise some concerns because the outcome of this, uh, this proceeding could have a final, financial impact to you. We have a sufficient, uh, quorum without your participating. And, uh, you know, I would, I would ask under those circumstances that you consider recusing yourself from this matter. I don't know whether you're, you're, there's, because this is still, still in an early phase, whether necessarily would swallow you. But I think it does cloud, potentially cloud the public perception of your judgment. That'd be my only concern.
Yeah, me too. And that's why I brought it forward. I don't want anyone to think, whether it goes anywhere or not with this particular development, I don't want anybody to think that there's that potential.
And that is, that is the, the kind of the gist of the appearance of fairness doctrine that, uh, that, that, that there's nothing that would cloud your judgment, um, in a decision rendered in this application. Uh, so I will though, go ahead and, and continue with the parents fairness disclosures. Uh, let's consider, and so Annie, uh, are you formally recusing yourself?
Yes.
So that leaves the four remaining council members, um, to be the decision maker potentially with the, with the mayor acting as a tiebreaker if that were to happen. So of the other four council members, do you have, do any of you have a financial stake in the outcome of this decision? Okay, I'm seeing heads shaking. And so I'm going to take those as no's. Most of you are muted. So, I'm just going to go on record saying that I don't have any head nods. So, no, you, the four of you do not have a, a stake in the outcome and not as the mayor. Secondly, uh, has any of the four of you plus the mayor had any ex-party communications with either proponents or opponents of this project? And that's outside this meeting. So I'm again seeing heads shaking, no heads nodding. Do any of you, uh, own property within 300 feet of the boundaries of this project? And I'm seeing heads shaking, no nodding. Is there, is there any other reason, any of the four plus the mayor of you would have sufficient prejudice about this project that you would be unable to fairly render a decision on the, uh, on the project on its merits? Okay, heads shaking, meaning all four of you plus the mayor feel like you could render a fair decision. Okay. So it appears that there's nothing statutorily that would prevent any of you from acting, uh, under, uh, as decision makers in this appearance of fairness hearing. I will typically leave it now up to the applicant to, uh, express whether they feel that any of the four of you plus the mayor should be removed for cause. Anybody from the, from the applicant? Waiting. Dean, I think you're, you're muted.
How about now?
There we go.
Any objections?
Great. None.
Okay, thank you. So we've, we've completed appearance of fairness and thank you for your patience.
Yeah. I didn't even remember, I didn't even remember Annie, so.
That leaves Matthew and then we'll give, we'll give Dean a chance.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dean.
I'm really excited about the project. I think it sounds extremely interesting and a great value to the community, but I have a significant concern around the paperwork as a whole. Last council, Robert and I had asked for some information to be conveyed to planning. It was not included in Ben's report to planning, nor was it, uh, conveyed by Leanna during the meeting. And if it wasn't the time for those to be brought up, uh, you know, some kind of communication, email, phone call, whatever it may be, um, never came about. And so this is kind of becoming a recurring theme of communication for Ben and, and the planning department. And so if we can't effectively communicate something simple, um, you know, I have reservations around, you know, the actually of the work on this project, uh, and beyond.
Matthew, can you clarify what that is about? Um, I don't recall the, I, I don't understand what you wanted communicated, but wasn't.
Sure. Um, so Robert had, um, had questions around the traffic studies, um, which we had explained now, which is great, but it was asked to be conveyed to planning commission. I anticipated there would be uh, some kind of shoreline variance required, which ecologies indicating, uh, would likely, you know, would be likely. Um, and so I was saying, you know, as a, as a point of, you know, uh, kind of a negotiation part of be great to have some affordable housing versus hotels that we need, um, in the community. None of this had been conveyed by staff to planning or conveyed back to us that that's in the works and we'll come back to it later.
Understood. Thank you.
Okay. So everyone's had their chance to chime in.
Hey, Scott, I apologize. But yeah, before you run out, because I'm just, I'm trying to read it line by line as, as everybody's talking. I just had a couple other. Oh, okay. I went way too fast. Sorry. Yeah, go ahead and let Dean talk and then I can finish reading this.
All right, Dean?
I apologize.
All righty. Can everybody hear me okay? How about now?
Yeah, we're good. Go ahead.
Okay, great. Thank you, guys. Uh, thank you everybody for your time and stuff. I don't think I've had a project in the last 35 years where I haven't been able to talk to people or meet with people because of the COVID, you know? So I appreciate everybody's time and, uh, this is a little bit, uh, pretentious for everybody because like I said, we haven't had the opportunity to discuss a lot of these items that I feel had already been addressed. So let me reach back on a, on a couple of things. I know, um, the hot button here is the public access to the waterway. And, um, of being able to access that. I know Paul had mentioned that he'd been around, uh, the island and stuff. Uh, and if he has, uh, like I have, I've actually, there's three places you can actually crawl down to the water. You have a main place right now that's out on the peninsula. There's one on the far south end and there's one that's pretty steep on the north end of the project. The rest is, uh, too steep to access the water anywhere there. So when everybody keeps telling me that they're accessing the water, you've got to be one of those three points because I've climbed down to the water and I actually have climbed every piece of that between the brush and everything like that. So the access of the perimeter of that creates a problem with our setbacks and having the walkway. Uh, we're not opposed, you know, to, uh, continuing to work with people on that, but uh, right now you have no ADA access to the water and you have no shoreline for the 70% of that, you know, uh, property. So our proposal was to start off and go, hey, here's a path. We can get you to the main area. Everybody goes now out on the peninsula, peninsula. And one of the other areas, but right now, uh, I challenge you guys to walk out there and you walk that piece and see if you can access the water. With that said, you know, we've got enough creative people around here of how we can figure out to make this pathway work and keep it into your, uh, pro, uh, water access that you have down there. The permeable, uh, out on the peninsula there, the peninsula really consists, if you've been out there, it's a big chunk of concrete with railing on it. And, uh, as we get forward with this thing, it's going to be a pain to build on that. And we're going to need people smarter than me of how we're going to mitigate and get out there where this becomes an enhanced peninsula that people can walk on and not something that's a big chunk of rusted, chunk of concrete with rusted steel in it. So my point here on those two, I definitely want to work with somebody, but I don't want somebody thinking that this is a magical beach property that can be accessed all the way around this peninsula. There's going to be a few access points. We're willing to enhance that and we're willing to work with everybody to get the pathway, the ingress and the egress, uh, to those points. So, you know, we're open for discussion, but right now I think it's a little more challenging, uh, than initially it looks like. Somebody had mentioned something about the fill in there. The artifact, uh, situation, uh, I feel is totally not needed. There's, uh, if you look at the old prints, we can drive, there's probably 10 to 12 feet of fill in there that was done when they built the plant there on it. And then the plant was there. We've had a geotech come out. We've tested the geotechnical. The GN Northern did a complete study on that if anybody wants to see. So before we dump a bunch of money into it, one of the first things we do is we work with geotechnical. And with the geotechnical and with the fill there, um, I still say yes, let's monitor their artifacts, you know, and, uh, critical areas. But unless we hit something, we shouldn't have to have somebody out there monitoring it because it's a man-made peninsula with 12 to 15, uh, foot of fill over the period of time. The, um, landscaping, I'm all good, uh, on however we come with that. I'm not a, um, landscaping expert. Uh, Zach Powell, who's been, um, in charge of this project is, uh, all visiting family in Texas. So right now I leave that to Zach and, uh, the mall foster has a landscape guy that we use, um, who's very, you know, familiar with the area. And so I have no problem with working with this area, what plants we got to plant, how quick they got to grow, you know, the need for all that. We've used the material on the buildings, our, uh, stucco, our, our stone and earth tone colors and siding, uh, to make it blend in to the environment. So I'm all for having a great looking landscaping, something that people that blends in with the environment there. And I leave that to, uh, Ben and, and Zach and other people that can, you know, understand it and have more education on it than I do of it. The critical areas, you know, uh, that's an area of concern for me. Once again, it's an area where we have experts on that can get head you down to the rabbit hole here sometimes, you know, and it becomes a detriment instead of what it's initially done to do is to take care of the, the critical areas, but I don't want to get to the point where kind of like the shorefront again, everybody wants access to the water. That's fine. But right now you can access in three points, guys. So let's not, you know, it's not a beach. Same with the environmentally critical areas. I want to, you know, be a pro-green help, you know, enhance stuff. I don't want to be a detriment to it. But I'll, again, I don't want to build a spaceship, you know, and we can, and I've been there before. The last but not least concern to me is WASDOT. And here's my concern with WASDOT. I have no problem with the traffic study, but as they stated it, their, you know, turn off of SR14. So the last guy in, you know, gets a butt kicking. In Kennewick, we went in, the hospital built their thing in our development and Hampton Inn built their hotel. We came and put a retail space up, right? For attorneys, restaurants and stuff, and they wanted us to put a right-hand turn lane in. So right now I feel you've got a museum, you've got Skamania Lodge there. So I come in and I add X amount of trips. I know there'll be traffic passive measures like they've taken the speed hump there by Skamania and coming into our facility, I even look, you know, I'm open to getting the traffic study saying, hey, you're going to have needed a deceleration lane to turn into there. But it morphs. And then all of a sudden, like in Kennewick, I'm out on SR40, 14, putting in a right-hand, you know, decelerator lane at $350,000 when I'm the last trips in, you know, on the overall scale. So my big concern once again is like the, uh, environmental mitigation is the WASDOT. I deal with these guys all over the state and it turns into a spaceship and pretty soon they have me out on SR14 because I built 16, you know, uh, townhomes. So that's my concern with the traffic study. The other thing is the ADA has been brought up. Uh, we're required, uh, when we submit for building that one of every four units has to be ADA compliant. So there will be four units that have ADA compliability, uh, on those townhomes. They keep saying garages. It's not my intent to have garages in there. It's more of a catch-all room for mountain bikes and other things like that. And the kind of, uh, playroom and stuff for people to be there if it's raining and stuff, have an open space down there. In these ADA units, that area will be enhanced so they can access directly, the garage doors will be gone. There'd be a type of door there where they can access. They'll have their own restroom and everything like that. That they will be able to, um, comply with the ADA requirements that we have, uh, currently on that. The wildlife, um, uh, study. I'll have to check on that. I don't know. That surprises me. That wasn't done, uh, some form when we did our initial study on it. Not opposed to that at all, uh, on it. Other than that, that's kind of everything in a nutshell. The interpretive sign, it's all good to go. Where do we put it? When we get ready to put it, you know? I think that kind of addresses everybody's, some of the concerns I, you know, I've heard. So if you want to find I think that kind of addresses everybody's, some of the concerns I, you know, I've heard. So if you want to fire back there, if something I didn't address, please tell me.
Thank you, Dean. Robert, did you gather your thoughts?
Hi, Dean, thank you so much. One quick question, then just the verbiage you used, the way I'm reading the proposal, you're looking at sort of doing a what I call a condo tell project. I mean, it's the ones like we did out in Seaside where they're they're built as condos, but you rent them out in a hotel fashion and there's a management company that takes care of it. But then when you just spoke, you mentioned a townhome style and that I see is different. You sort of have a planned community, potential HOA running the sixteen units. Help me know which, which avenue you're looking down.
Yeah, can you hear me now?
Oh, sure can.
Okay. Wrong verbiage on my end. I call everything a townhome, you know? You can't use the condo word, you know, so you got to be careful what you say. This is a hospitality. As I see Ben, I understand Ben now has a new child, so welcome to the rabbit hole of money going, I have five daughters and one son. So one of the problems I have when I go somewhere like Skamania Lodge, I have to rent three and four rooms. But yet I can go over to Black Butte and I can rent, you know, basically a house and have the family there. And that was the intent here. You can go up to the lodge and get a room, but there's really no place that you can go take your family of five or your family of four and come to Stevenson. And so that was my main intent to be able to service families or two families. If you got your brother and his family, you want to go down there, there's a place or state, but it is a, it's built to be a hospitality. Short-term state.
Well, I just, because you're looking at him in your phase one is sixteen and what's, it's used condo-style units. I'm assuming adjoining walls, common roof structures for the entire sixteen units. So is it going to be one building with sixteen?
Okay, correct. I know it's going to be, they're, they come in four.
Doing fours.
Yeah. So they're four, they're attached together and then fours attached together. So that allows a footprint where it doesn't look like some behemoth white elephant sitting out there. It allows us to make it smaller, more something like Brusada out there ranch or, you know, Pronghorn, something like that where there's a little conglomerate of three or four of them built together.
Well, and that's why it looked like you were proposing to have that under a single, is that a different ownership group that you want to have? You're going to have a management company that'll come in and sort of manage that?
No, well, there's a group of us that invest together, but we form one LLC and we'll own all of this. It's not our intent to sell these off individually. On the other end, I had also mentioned, somebody said about the phases was concerning, you know, that they were concerned that they were concerned of building in phases if they didn't know what they were going to get. And there is a site plan that shows what we're doing. There's five units on one, five cabins on the narrow peninsula to the south. And then there's a gathering, I don't even know what to call it. It's a commercial building where you could either have a wedding reception or some type of food market, you know, on the weekend, something, a commercial building is what we wanted to put there. To kind of break it up.
Yeah, it's in the, in the application, it's the phase three is just going to be studio-sized units, but that's the five out on the peninsula that you're talking about.
Yeah, they're cabins. They're going to be cabins. If you've been up to Brusada.
I have.
Cabins, just like that is what we're shooting for.
So what, eight hundred to twelve hundred, twelve feet?
Yeah, they're not very big. They're not very big. And also there is a, something to do and maybe Ben can in, have some input here. There was something, it was easier to go into a phase one to get this addressed than to try to get through the whole thing at one time. Am I correct with that, Ben?
Yeah, I'm prepared to talk about that, both in relation to Paul's questions about the public access. So I will do that later unless you want me to do it now.
Now, just mildly last comment, Dean, I don't think you and I have ever met, but you know, I'm a, I'm a construction attorney. I represent developers all over Oregon and Washington. So I just thought it was interesting that you're choosing to do your cabin sort of what we'll call phase three at the end. So you want to drive through your nicely new constructed townhomes and drop these five cabins in. Okay. It's your choice, sir, but you're going to piss off your new friends here real quick. That's all.
Well, once again, it was a zoning thing on our phases is where, what we're talking about here. I've been a little remiss on this project. Like I said, Zach's been handling this from the planning zoning side. I've been in Kennewick and in the city of Ridgefield. We just put that new Rose Hours Grocery Store. That was a pretty big thousand with thirty thousand of retail. So that's kept me busy on that end. So Zach was starting this out, but I think it's a zoning thing of how we had to phase this. And Ben can speak on that more. But I'm glad I never met you as an attorney, so.
There's always due time. There's always due time. So, yeah, Scott, real quick, just a couple of comments I had, and I don't know Ben, if this is, if you've got it up in front of you, but section one point nine, construction hours, I just think that ought to be less than ten PM since you've got the assisted living right there.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Don't pay attention, Robert. We talked about this last time.
I, I know. I'm tired of reading. I should stop reading. And there was a couple of little small ones, but I can go through that. The way I read this, Ben, is it's a shoreline application for just phase one. Is Dean going to have to come back and do a separate one for phases two and three?
Yes, he will.
I like Dean shaking his head no, but I knew that wasn't going to go well. Just so Dean understands, that's the way this application is coming in. It's for your phase one sixteen units only.
Correct, yeah.
That's right. Can I just say one more thing about the traffic guys that I was remiss about is I'm willing to enter into the developer's agreement, Robert, like I did over in Kennewick. When I create so many trips, then, you know, it's just like a TIF fee that they have. And we agreed that the traffic impact fees or something like that at that point, if we get to a certain point on TIFs and we finally end up doing this in Kennewick, like I don't want to be beaten up the last guy every time, you know, it's not fair and then people won't come. So we allocated TIFs to be used for regional sub-area to address, let's say WASDOT does look down the road on SR fourteen to make a right-hand trip. So if I've created X amount of trips, we have a developer's agreement saying, look, I'm going to be responsible for X amount, but I'm not going to put it in because Skamania has more trips than me and the museum has more trips than me. So we try to make it a little more equitable with it and then it helps drive the cat, private cash flow to give grants and stuff for the city. So I am open to talking about developer agreements on some of this stuff.
Dean, I'm sorry to report we're non-GMA planning in Skamania, so we don't have the ability to use TIFs. But maybe some other means of funding improvements in the developer's agreement. We can, we can look at other options, but we can't use TIFs.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah, we're open to it. And like I said, I can put you in touch with several cities that we've done. And we've carried our, carried our weight. We've done what we said. I know a lot of these smaller towns that get promises and stuff doesn't get built, but Kennewick, Ridgefield. And everything we've, we've delivered.
Dean, just, just so you'll know, my concern is not with SR fourteen and I'm not a big fan of WASDOT anyway. We've been trying to get trucks off that damn highway for years, but it is a concern just looking at Rock Creek and I would like to see some professional information on, you know, what kind of impact it'll have. I know you've driven it a few times. It is, you know, the lodge you turn right in, you don't really access the street. But the further you get down and as you come around that corner towards Hagawall, it's just, it'll just be interesting to see what the impacts that he says.
Yeah.
And again, I'm not, you know, if WASDOT comes at you, call Curtis King.
And that's my concern because I had played that game twice with WASDOT now and they like building spaceships, you know, so. Thanks.
Yeah, that's, I'm sorry, counsel, that's the comments I had.
Thank you, Robert. Ben, you want to fill in some of the blanks?
I'd be happy to. So I'll start with that phasing plan. So this plan, as it's written in the application and in the draft permits on the proposal is only for phase one. Phase one is for the sixteen units for buildings and associated site work. The reason for not including the public access trails and other developments in part of this phase is regulatory. So that's why it's not making sense to a lot of people. Our current shoreline regulations have a blanket setback of fifty feet. This applies to all structures, whether that's a building or as Department of Ecology interprets that, whether that's a stairway or a pathway or anything. There's a fifty-foot setback from Rock Creek, Rock Cove. And so within that, they would need a shoreline variance to build that shoreline variances. The way our current standard is, is a very high bar for them. They would have to prove that there's no economically feasible use of the site unless they build within that setback area. So Ecology's guidance to us is to say that's not something that is likely to be approved. And so we're working with the applicants. They've separated this out. So phase one is just the first sixteen units. Future phases would be the permitting for the pathway construction itself and future buildings. So the future then is likely to be after our updates to the shoreline management program are approved by Ecology, which I anticipate sometime in twenty. Those proposals, as you guys approved it, have differential setbacks for different types of uses. So for public access pathways, it's much closer. I believe it's twenty-five in the proposal. That's something that we could then permit them to do. It's farther away for the water-related commercial activity that this would be. It's similar to thirty-three or fifty feet, something like that in the future proposal. So they are waiting on those changes to take effect so that they can get a project that's permissible. Permissible does mean coming back to the city council for additional approvals. The points though about the phasing being confusing are well-taken. The site plans do indicate the full developments and, and just show where phase one is. We're only permitting phase one if we permit this project.
Thanks, Ben.
Ben?
Yes.
I'm sorry, it's Amy. Can you direct me to a page number to like see a site plan?
Thirty-four is going to be the best one.
Yeah, that's the page I'm on. Okay. Thanks.
So that's in the northern part of the site there, there's eight units. And then as you move over to the western part, there's four on the north and four in the south. And then phase two would be public access pathways, the venue building. And phase three is the smaller units out on the southern peninsula.
And it doesn't, am I missing? Does it? Does it show you on this map where the phases are? No.
Not well. That's, that's one of the problems that's led to a lot of this confusion. So that's confusion and this is to Matthew's point from Ecology. They couldn't really tell what was going on with it either. We talked to them and, and their their statement was, we're just concerned because we can't exactly tell what's going on. They didn't have any real concerns about the need for shoreline conditional use. In fact, she said that that was an error. It was the shoreline variance that they were really more worried about. And so I want to be clear that you are not reviewing or approving any shoreline variance tonight if you do approve this project. And that would be for any of those structures, including pathways within fifty feet of the water. And so this is a reason for that staged requirement that within three years they build those.
Yeah, Amy, if you counted, you have to draw a weird circle around the four rectangle blocks of buildings. That's your phase one. You've got, as you drive in, you've got one on the right, one on the left. And then if you go down, you have the two other buildings, two sets of buildings on the left-hand side. Phase two, what I described is existing lot four and proposed lot six. That's sort of the common area that he's looking at.
That's phase two.
Yeah. And then phase three is the cabins down at the end. And Dean, if I, if I did that wrong, you know, certainly tell me, but I think that's why I drew it out.
Amy, you can also look on page forty-six. The layout has changed slightly. So the, the on page thirty-four, that's the revised layout, but the buildings and the phasing is also identified on page forty-six.
Thank you.
Did you not receive the one that has phase two, like for the venue building, phase one for the upper?
Let's make forty-six, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I didn't, I wasn't looking at that. Thank you. Easier for me. Okay.
And Amy, forty-six is nice because it shows his parking space that he's looking at for the cabins down.
Yep. Yeah, that's a much easier drawing for me. Thank you.
And Dean, I would like to, to point out that I, I wasn't, nobody thinks of the shoreline there as the beaches of the Cancun. It's, it's not. I have walked literally the entire perimeter of that place right at where the water meets the land. And it's rugged, it's tough. That's not for the typical person to do. When I talk about the shoreline access for the public, I'm not talking about the ability to actually walk into the water one hundred percent of the way around. Not at all. I'm talking about the ability to walk near the water to experience being close to Rock Cove. To, rather than the, the proposed public access is simply a walk-in, walk-out. And the and I, I literally do hiking trail design and construction. And the, the in and out sort of hikes are not appealing to many people at all. Everyone wants either a, a circle or what we call a lollipop, where you walk in, you walk around a circle, you walk out. Or a through path, which the original trail, that's, that's the easement, the current easement is a through path. And that is a, that is a very appealing pathway for a recreational sort of stroll through Stevenson. And that's the sort of thing that I'm a proponent for.
But we also have to balance this with the fact that it is privately owned now. So I mean, it's great that we're trying to maintain some of the access that's already there. But the, you know, it's not, it's not public land anymore.
But there is a public easement.
Correct. Go ahead, Amy.
I was just going to ask if Paul, are you, what I think you're describing is something similar to what we have at the fairgrounds, right?
Correct. And also down in front of the Tishner Building. That sort of thing.
And what it, does it need to be paved? Can we do like a gravel path that goes around that doesn't interfere so much with like Mary's point about water, you know, stormwater runoff from a path.
So ADA accessibility, if that comes into play, I probably would have to be paved. However, if that doesn't come into play, for, for my, for my perspective, it wouldn't need to be paved.
And Dean, have you walked around that path that goes around the fairgrounds on the other side of Rock Cove? Do you know what we're talking about?
Yeah, several times. I actually spend more time in Stevenson than you guys think. I come through to go to Kennewick and stuff and so I'm there a lot. I bet you, I'm there one day a week on my way back to Kennewick or to Kennewick or back. And so I've walked it. I've had dinner there. You know, it's one of the things that led me to want to be there. I'm a small-town boy from Montana. My joke is there was five kids in my third grade class. It was the only time I was the top five of my whole life in my classroom. So I'm familiar with the small towns and I think more than willing to work on this path, but I don't think this path, you know, we still have a not questioning Paul's ability to build. And I'm just seeing the, they drop off really steep in some of these areas and then with the setbacks and everything. So I'm, I'm actually looking for some input and I'll be look forward to meeting, you know, Paul or somebody to get a better idea how we're going there. As we move forward, once again, yeah, it does have public, but yes, it is a private, you know, thing that we're building. So I'm trying to merge the two together that enhances, you know, within thing that we're building. So I'm trying to merge the two together that enhances, you know, within a reasonable, you know, uh, area to get them access to the beaches and stuff, but I, the perimeter of that thing is going to be a very, very expensive bid build. And then if you do the impervious, now you've created impervious asphalt and now you got a storm runoff. So I think it's something, we're more than willing to work with you, but how do we go about it? Let's do a consensus, you know, and kind of get together with everybody. And how does this match up to the rest of the walkways do you have? And is this a point with a turnaround? Can we do that, you know? So I just didn't wanna build something outside here and then try to go fit it to reality because that's a difficult spot, you know, to walk completely around it.
It is definitely a difficult spot. There would be crib walls involved and so forth. Yeah, yeah, it, it would not be easy. And my experience with trail building is to uh, Forest Service standards, which are not eight, they're non-ADA.
Yeah.
Uh, and they're almost, I wouldn't say a hundred percent dirt uh, tread, but probably a hundred percent dirt tread. So my experience is from a uh, uh, coming from a different perspective. But um, yeah, I, I do think it's possible. Probably expensive.
Yeah. So it's, once again, I'd like to get with a few and, and come up with an idea, you know, kind of refine this, but for right now, it's, we took the, here's the path, we're getting everybody there and it comes back around there. If there's something else we can change or something else we can do that doesn't turn into a, you know, spaceship, more than willing to, you know, to do that.
Ben, are we voting on this piece of it tonight?
And then first public hearing?
This lost connection, so I didn't hear uh, all about that. We are not voting specifically on the public access uh, piece tonight, but there are some specific guidance points uh, that I want to be able to give the applicants so that next month, when the plat amendment comes to you, uh, it reflects really what um, everybody's expecting. And that there could be some uh, offline discussions after the meeting between the applicants and um, the staff or council members. Uh, we can go over that. Um, and again, sorry, I lost connection. So I don't know exactly what conversations were had. Um, I did hear you talking about the different standards of pathway. That's one of those key things to talk about so that everyone uh, knows what they're expecting uh, with the different types of tread. The other distinction um, that I want people to consider when we talk about uh, public access. In the shoreline sense, there's public visual access to the water and public physical access to the water. With the site as it sits right now, in the easement as it is right now, everything provides public uh, visual access to the water. And so as they propose something different, uh, is there some sort of trade-off that you would like to see for uh, public physical access to the water uh, in some of those areas where Dean says it's possible? So that there's not quite as much, um, if there is not quite as much uh, visual access around the circumference of the property there. So you, you know, I wanted to think about that. Uh, also where this site, um, I'm, I'm on page thirty-four in the colored section there, where the easement comes in from the property to the south. Um, to start onto the property in, in the, around the circumference. That uh, easement exists on the neighboring property. And so finding some outlet from that point, either back to the west and Rock Creek or onto the um, the system as it will exist, uh, is something to really consider and, and give that guidance on. But we don't have to make specific decisions tonight. We should provide them as much guidance as possible.
Okay, so if I can attempt to recap, um, there's lots of concern, or at least would like to discuss more about access to the waterfront and traffic. It's, it, um, there was also, one of the things that Ben brought up was the, the cultural aspect. And to Dean's point, that is man-made. Great deal, a great deal of that is man-made with, that had um, industrial operations on there. So it seems like those are the, the three things that we're looking for some more, some more direction on. So um, I guess, so if this is our first touch, then we have the opportunity to approve it or provide some more direction to, to Dean and his group so that we can be prepared to um, address and approve this very exciting project uh, next month.
Just to that point, we um, at the planning commission, we presented them with hey, you know, the, there's this proposal and there are several administrative approvals that are necessary coming out of this proposal. Uh, that includes the engineering review, the, the Robert discussed, that includes the critical areas and habitat issues that we haven't spent a lot of time on and we can spend some more time on tonight and down to other issues, whether uh, the planning commission wanted to recommend we hold the permit back until those issues are better settled or um, go ahead with approval there. I have an unstable internet connection, so hopefully it's, it's um, you can hear me. Uh, the planning commission didn't recommend holding it back. They provided the, the recommendations that you saw there. It's still something that, that could be considered uh, by you guys, but you do have the ability to approve things tonight. Uh, first touch would have been at the last meeting when the uh, application first presented to you. And, and then uh, you can um, approve tonight. You can schedule a public or schedule a special meeting to uh, review things in more detail if you finally need to do that, uh, or postpone it until the next council meeting.
So uh, I, I'd like to apologize. I had a distraction there. Tonight, whatever we approve tonight is not the public access portion of tonight, that, that's not of it. That we're not approving or disapproving the proposed public access, correct?
The specific conditions related to public access in, in the document are seven, eight, and eight A. Seven says they need to provide some sort of performance bond or other uh, escrow account or financial assurance to say that that public access, whatever it is, will be constructed. Uh, eight is that they need to do that within three years or before phase two is occupied. And eight A is to so pay, hey, we should really work this out more potentially through the plat amendment process, uh, and that would be at the next meeting.
Okay.
As far as the, the traffic part. Could, I wanna, I tried trying to get a feel if this is something that everyone's comfortable with approving tonight, or if there's just too many questions to do it tonight, then let's, let's keep this going. I, I, I don't want to um, you know, planning is, is brought it forward. So if traffic is something that needs to be addressed, let's, we're gonna have to schedule a meeting and, and work that out, but I, I certainly don't want to see this project die over some concerns that can easily be addressed.
I think we need a special meeting or at least a follow-up on public access and what that means, the traffic study, the wildlife study. Um, you know, some of these things are they're just kind of weighty, you know? But I, I also want to echo, I don't know if it was Paul or who said, but I'm a big fan of this project. I think it's gonna be awesome for the city of Stevenson. And I definitely do not want uh, Dean or anybody else on the call to think that uh, you know, uh, I'm trying to be obstructionist or that any of us are. We just want to make sure that we are, you know, representing our citizens and, and that this project meets what we need, um, you know, as well. So, but I, I, I'm not ready to vote in favor of, of moving this forward, Scott. I'm sorry.
Yeah, thank, thank you, Amy, for speaking. The uh, I, I am definitely in favor of this project moving forward. Uh, I just don't want traffic to become a problem there or anywhere. And uh, it's clear from the meetings I've gone to on this, the public meetings, that, that public access to the shoreline is important.
I, I, I echo Amy's comments. We need a special meeting, whether it be an hour and we can limit it or two, just so we can make sure that we're all on the same page. Because you know, we do these developments at least, what, seven, eight times a year, Amy? So I mean, it's, I mean, I don't know why we don't have this down. And it's a joke. This is the first time we've had this one. And Amy and I came on city council together in two thousand and nine, so uh, we, we welcome your project. We want to just make sure that we know what we're doing right and that we get it done correctly for you as well as for our, our constituents. I think we do need a special meeting sometime, you know, the next week or so.
Um, let me finish by saying, guys, I appreciate everybody's time and you're not offending me one way or the other. It's your job to make sure that the citizens there, you know, uh, get uh, representation of their concerns. Um, my only concern that I have, and this is not a drop dead date or, you know, a what, you know, this or nothing. I can't get into the rainy season with you guys. I'll lose another year there. And that's my only concern. And I appreciate the special meetings. So if we can get, you know, this expedited, you know, whether yea or nay and, and address some of it, how do we address? Um, to me, the shoreline thing is an evasive thing and we're not gonna answer it right away, but how do we put something, you know, uh, in play that assures you get what you, you know, want, we get with, or a happy medium. And I don't think that's gonna be a quick fifteen minute because I'm looking at this thing and my ideas are still stuck, you know, popping around. Just, I'm sure Paul has ideas. So if we could put something in place that people are secured, I just don't want to lose another two months because I'm in the rainy season and then I'm done. I can't, I'm not gonna open that place up in the winter time.
Dean, you must not have been here last week. I mean, the rainy season was even last week here.
That's what I said. We get rain in the summertime, so I have no chance if I get to the fall, guys.
I'm, I'm not really sure what you're thinking is our non-raining season anymore in this, this uh, little part of the gorge.
But yes, we, we can make that hap, I mean, Scott, schedule, we can make it happen pretty quickly.
All right. So I have my calendar open. Do you guys have your calendar open? If, if we're looking at next, next week, the only evenings that I have available are Monday and Thursday. Or late. I guess Tuesday, I have a meeting that goes until six, so I might be a couple of minutes late. So maybe Tuesday, but Monday and Thursday for sure. And that's the twenty-second and the twenty-fifth.
Uh, am I participating in this or not?
I, Andy, I think we should have your comments and your concerns.
Well, normally if someone's recused themselves, they should not comment.
Yeah, but can I, can I attend to gather information for myself?
I mean, you're a member of the public. You just
Right.
shouldn't contribute. Um, so you certainly can be present.
Okay.
Um, and listen to what's going on.
Okay.
I, I think probably not participating.
Okay.
What time are we thinking? Thursday won't work.
Probably six.
And I, I can do anything but Tuesday.
Same for me.
Sounds like Matthew has Thursday blocked out. So how are you guys looking on Monday, a couple of days from now? Is that enough time for our announcement, Leona?
Yeah, it's just twenty-four hours for a special meeting.
If it's six, if it's six, I can zoom in. Uh, I do have a meeting that starts at seven.
Okay. So
Ken, will we be foreboding if we wanted to do this live? At least uh, some of us down at City Hall?
Can't do it, sorry. Still the governor's prescription against in-person meetings in effect. And so that, that lasts until July first unless he withdraws it. But no, no in-person meetings, sorry.
Then, then let me do this. Ben, can you call out of the five hundred and seventy-six pages from the, the packet tonight? The stuff that deals with just the project and send that to us?
Yes, absolutely. And to make best use of that hour than next week, did we get anywhere tonight?
I, I think you got a thumbs up from all, from five people about the project. So I think we made significant headway.
Okay, so we can, we can kind of tailor the discussion to the uh, uh, eighteen or so conditions that are placed on it?
Oh, yeah, yeah, no, I think you're gonna have a limited, you know, meeting. I mean, although it sounds like Dean's ready to pull building permits tomorrow and move, move dirt, so. Yeah, I think, yeah, I think that after Monday, you're gonna be narrowed down to one or two, you know, quote, hot topics that Dean's gonna have to figure out.
We want to talk about public access and we want to talk about traffic and other really minor things, but those are the two big ones.
Right.
And then to, to help streamline that discussion, does the council want to weigh in on the specific traffic issues or just a requirement that a traffic uh, study is necessary?
Whoa, that's, I mean, it's a two-folded question, Ben, because the way I look at it is I want to know what issues, you know, a study is gonna present. I've got my own thoughts, but you know, that and my law degree don't get me very far in the civil engineering world, so. I mean, I know there are standards that WASD puts out. I don't know what effect that has on Rock Cove. Uh, you know, we, when we tried to widen and put in traffic controls just on Loop Road, it's like moving, you know, heaven and earth for that.
Yeah, so I, the impact to that decision then, maybe the meeting next Monday is still um, uh, too soon. Maybe you want to see a full traffic impact report. Maybe you want to see a full um, other reports that you, you might be requiring based on this before the approval. So it's that, that question of, did the administrative side approve things when they come in? Or does the council uh, make all those decisions?
If, if we're gonna require a public, a traffic study, I don't know how quickly that's gonna turn around, but that, that's, we're back into that two-month problem and that, and that's not helping out our applicant.
No, I agree. That's why I think we can have some conversation about that specific issue. And if, you know, a majority of us are thumbs up with what it is, it is, then I think we can move forward.
Okay.
Again, I, we can't control WASD, so.
Okay.
I, I need an update on the fire hall too. I mean, the fire hall definitely has an impact.
Yeah, can I just comment on one, guys, here? Uh, traffic studies are running around six to eight weeks. Um, I just got one done in Ridgefield for a office on a building down there. Um, the second thing is I have done, gotten approval uh, that once, that we do a traffic study and once the traffic study is done, then it becomes uh, up to the administrative group to approve a traffic mitigation plan before I can build permit. So um, that's another option to take into consideration if you're open to that.
Yeah.
And so to be clear, we don't, we're, we're not required to do a traffic study, correct?
Correct.
It's, it's
We have concerns. You have
Sure, we, I, I, absolutely, we have concerns. But if we could come up with some sort of plan just amongst ourselves that would all go, yeah, that looks good, then we could leave out the formal study?
Uh, yeah, I would heavily uh, include the applicant in amongst ourselves.
Abs, and I am.
I don't want you to get in a position where you can't defend
Yes.
your actions for constitutionally.
Absolutely, absolutely.
We're looking at Monday, six o'clock?
Monday, twenty-second, six o'clock. Um, expect a Zoom invitation tomorrow.
Okay.
Okay, so that will remain unfinished for now.
I feel unclear. I apologize. Uh, Scott, so the three things that, I'm trying to get started on my end and have Zach. So we're talking traffic, public access. Is there anything else that you guys are concerned? The, the public access, access to the shoreline and the pathways.
Yeah.
Those two things are, is there anything else that I need?
Those seem to be the, the big ones.
There were some smaller things, like a wildlife study, which you said maybe had already been done or you weren't opposed to, but
Okay.
there was nothing else of substance, I don't think. Does anybody else recall?
Dean, if you have any renderings, can you shoot those over? Or Ben has them. Make sure Ben has them, so we get them in our packet. Just sort of what you're looking at from a design, you know, from your DC drawings.
We didn't give that to you?
Well, and they may be air. I just didn't, I got five hundred and ninety-five, five hundred and ninety-seven pages here, so I may have missed them.
Yeah, I thought I saw a rendering in here.
Okay, okay.
Well, I didn't know if you were beyond design. Are you past schematics? Are you in design development or?
Yes, sir, we're in construction drawings right now.
You're into CDs? Okay, all right. Well, yeah, that'd be great. Thank you.
Let's see if I can find that, because I, I know I did, I did stumble across it. You're right, navigating through this.
Forty-eight?
Forty-eight.
Dean, do you guys self-perform the construction or are you hiring out? Self-perform?
We, a combination of both. We try to get local contractors there in the community. Will we J see it?
Um, Leona, may I ask you a question? Yeah, or Scott may ask Leona a question? Thank you. I'm wondering if, when we get that, this next packet, because, and maybe I just don't know how to navigate and very well. I'm having a really hard time jumping from page to page when Ben's like, oh, page thirty-six, I want to just immediately go to page thirty-six. Can you, you know how you do in the packet where you, you hyperlink the, can you hyperlink some of the important pages or drawings?
I'll highlight them as separate documents.
Yeah, that's why I was talking, we can get a standalone packet.
Thank you.
You can also type the number in the
Navigation bar. If you're using something like Reader, if you, depending on your browser, if you download it and click it, it automatically opens it in a browser, so some of the functionality might go away, so you might have to take that as an extra step to open with. I don't know what that translates to for Mac users, but I do know that the browsers do like to take control of a downloaded PDF and then you lose some of your navigation abilities that way.
Yeah, mine isn't navigating like that, but I could try a different browser.
Adobe Acrobat works good.
Yeah, if you just get the, the free reader, that, that adds the functionality that you're probably missing just within the browser.
Yeah, thanks.
Okay, moving on to our second public hearing. Make sure I've got my cheat sheet in front of me, so I'd like to open for the new single-family residence C-one moratorium, open public, the public hearing at seven fifty-eight. Is this you, Leona? Are you going to start us off?
Sure, it can be this, this resolution are the finding of, findings of fact that correspond to the moratorium that was put on single fam, new single-family residential construction in the C-one zone. And it has been updated slightly with timeframes from the previous moratoriums that were adopted on the same topic.
Okay, so I know that we have quite a few guests here this evening. So how about Brian, Brian McNamara, you start us off if you just make sure to introduce yourself?
Okay, this is Brian McNamara. Pardon me, I'm a downtown Stevenson property owner. And I guess, rather than, I, I believe you guys have my comments in front of you. I will just summarize those, and I'm sure everybody will be happier. The fact is, is that at the last meeting, when the moratorium was approved, it was basically a foregone conclusion before the public comment was even considered. Indeed, the, the council members have flat out said, and I quote, "We have already decided in this, and it should already have been done," end quote. And furthermore, the problem of the first original moratorium without a public comment and the poor situation that the McCloskey's went through. And, you know, many of the several council members even said that they were sorry that wish that it hadn't gone that way. And so there were about twenty comments, apparently, to that last meeting. And eleven of them were from current, single-family dwelling owners in the downtown. All were negative. And so the perception that, that some of those people, all of them in fact, was that, you know, our feedback was falling on deaf ears. And indeed, the council went ahead and started a new moratorium. So, you know, this situation we're facing is based on the fact that the, some of the public and stakeholders woke up. We didn't even know about this moratorium. And we didn't know how our properties had been affected for the last year and a half. And when we found out, then we brought our concerns to the council. And, you know, we just, as a property owner, I, I'd kind of like to, you know, have a say in such things. And so, you know, that, that's been highlighted. And some of the, just a couple of the moratorium clauses, the wherases, the city counts, whereas this is in the moratorium, the city council finds that the city's ability to preserve the look and the feel of the city as outlined in the adopted comprehensive plan will be jeopardized unless this moratorium is authorized. Personally, most of us feel that's a stretch. The city hasn't changed faces in over thirty years. And so, you know, and to go further, in the moratorium itself, it says that the city of Stevenson Council finds the authorization of this moratorium is necessary to protect the health, welfare, safety, and future econ, economic viability of the city. That's a stretch. You know, there's, we all have been here for a long time. I've been here for thirty years. We have seen the passing cavalcade of dreamer businesses. You know, so the, that, you know, it does, that seemed kind of spurious to me. And basically, I'll just go on to one more concept here where the city council is, is going ahead with the twenty nineteen Plan for Success. And yet we're still referring to the twenty nineteen, twenty thirteen Comprehensive Plan, which was just a few years ago. And the, tonight's finding the fact actually mentions the one of the, I think it's item one, that the Comprehensive Plan, quote, "Consider new family dwellings in small lots." But the Comprehensive Plan of twenty thirteen actually said regarding single-family dwellings was in four point three point dash three, ensure the viability, saleability, and rebuildability of existing single-family homes in the downtown area by including zoning provisions such as designating all homes built prior to January first, twenty thirteen as permitted use, or incorporating generous continuation policies for non-conforming single-family dwellings. So what the, what the stakeholders and the public would like is something along those lines, not a moratorium, which could be in fact for, for a long time. And this moratorium doesn't allow for exceptions. But what we need to do is going forward is, A, I would hope the city council would contact physically with a mail, send a letter, and many of the owners requested this so that we know when these drastic decisions are being made that affect our property rights in perpetuity. Or, and just, you know, one way around this would be to grandfather the rights of single-family dwellings owners as they were granted at the time of the purchase. These houses are not hurting the downtown, and, you know, the public, without a single advocate other than members of the council, the public has spoken at the last meeting, and we feel that, that, you know, it was just a foregone conclusion. So that's my summary. I wish that the council would reconsider on this. I know we have a zoning commission, zoning planning commission meetings where these things will be codified. But, you know, it shouldn't be a done deal without more input from the stakeholders, and that's all from me. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Monica, you've been around. May I thank you for your patience? If you'd like to introduce yourself for the record and like to hear your thoughts.
Thank you. This is Monica Moscow. And as most of you know, I have a mixed-use residence and accounting office at two, three, five First Street. I've been here twenty-seven years. I do offer a great service to members of our community. I oppose the resolution tonight. If my structure was destroyed due to a catastrophic event, I would not be able to replace my dwelling. And this is unsettling and seems unfair. Seems like that's taking my property rights. And actually, I consider it kind of punishment for being a good neighbor. I also had the same quotes. My statement is on your page three seventy-six of your PDF. But I also quoted the city's Comprehensive Plan. And it states on page one that Stevenson is a friendly, welcoming community that values excellent schools and a small-town atmosphere. And I think part of our atmosphere is having these homes downtown and having business combinations and potentially having the back and forth of the business and the residences. I also hope that I know we're going to be talking about this at the planning meeting next month. And we need a creative solution that grandfathers us in and, and, and lets us allow to continue what we have set up and what we've come to enjoy and the reason that we purchased our property. And I know you're only hearing from a few of us tonight, but all the information at the May meeting is still true and it's still in your packet. You can reference that. But I hope you consider the back and forth residence and business use of the single-family dwellings. And I would encourage you to also not approve this resolution tonight. I enjoy living in my house on First Street, and I'd like to continue that. Thank you.
Thank you, Monica. I'm going to go through the names that are listed on here until I run into just phone numbers, and we'll just have to see what happens from there. But Norm, you're next on my screen. If you could introduce yourself and we'd like to hear your thoughts.
Hi, I'm Norm Haight. Yeah, just tuning in, I haven't, I have Gloria Howell here with me, and we're just getting up to speed on the proposal over on Rock Creek Cove, so, yeah, we don't have any comments at this time. Gloria, do you have anything?
No, I just, this is rural America and, and it's a slower pace. I realize there's been many improvements, but I think we, we look particularly at the park and the walkway, the pathway that leads to the lodge. One of the biggest things for the lodge was, well, we were going to have all these people walking uptown and buying from us. And it's so nice to be able to see so many of our own local people just using it for exercise. I live right on Pegwall Pond, and my husband has lived on that property since nineteen forty-nine. So I would hope that we could keep it a little bit sacred and rural. I think with a potential new fire hall and EMT building, Rock Cove, Interpretative Center, Scaminia Lodge, cabins at Scaminia Lodge, eighteen-hole reduced golf course, which I understand is going to be nine shortly. There's a lot of things going on, and I think that our local council really needs to step up to the plate and, and look at these things like they are, and I really appreciate your thoughts.
All right, Mr. Mayor, I don't, I don't want to confuse the record, though. This is a public hearing relating to the single-family housing zone. And I think Mrs. Howell was, was addressing the earlier public hearing that, that is already closed. And I, and I think we have to be careful not to muddy the record.
Understood. All right, next up, I have someone just, Robert, Robert, did you have some comments for this public hearing?
No, I don't. I'm just listening in. Thank you.
Okay, I have four more phone numbers on my screen here. I don't know how to, to start to, to the, we don't get pandemonium. If someone wants to chime in, and we'll, we'll try to keep this as organized as possible. If any of you have some additional thoughts for us tonight on this matter alone.
Mary Rapar.
Go ahead, Mary.
Thank you, Mayor. I really don't know why you all need this moratorium. I don't think it should be approved. I think you have heard what the community wants by all the comments that you have received. And, you know, we should be so lucky that people would want to build new buildings in our downtown area so that we could have more tax revenue on taxing property instead of open lots and that. As Brian pointed out, and thank you very much, Brian, that was a good summation. The Comprehensive Plan, when we did it in twenty thirteen, in all the meetings, I believe it lasted fifteen to eighteen months, there was never any discussion among all the participants, and there was a lot of participation by the community that homes and houses in the downtown area should not be allowed. We felt actually, if I recall all the discussions that we had, that having homes in that area contributed to the rural character of our community and also to the vitality of the downtown and the livability of downtown. So I realized that new councils always want to put their stamp on how our community looks. But I think the community has spoken, and they don't want this, and I don't think you need to spend your time, which you've got a whole bunch of other things to be worrying about on this moratorium. It does no good to anybody to try to make Stevenson something that you think it should be when it is going to go where it will. And to deprive people of their property rights is not a good idea for anybody. So I don't think this moratorium should pass, and I think the council needs to take this off your agenda. You have a lot more difficult projects and, and other things on your plate. And to take up time on this moratorium is, and getting people all riled up is really not an essential activity at this point. So please don't approve this moratorium. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Is there anybody else that would like to comment on this matter? Okay, nobody's chiming in. I'd like to close public comments at eight fifteen. So a couple of points from my side. First off, the way the, and can correct me, Leona, correct me if I'm wrong. The way the moratorium process works is that we identify something that needs to be dealt with in a short order, but then are mandated, obligate, not obligated, compelled to then circle back with the findings of fact and also to include the, the public so that they can all participate in the process and weigh in on the moratorium itself. So the, the process might seem like we were trying to pull something over here to, to hide. We weren't trying to hide. We're, we are following due process as far as the moratorium process goes. The, I have started, started meetings with those that commented at the last meeting. I've already had a sit-down with Brian McNamara, and last night I had a sit-down with Rick Toledo, and I'm going to start going down the list. Those of you that have chimed in, you can expect an email or a phone call from me and asking for some of your time so that we can sit down and talk more about what's going on here. The, at the last meeting, there was a lot of discussion about the ability to toggle back and forth between businesses, and I, I hope that I did a good job of explaining that that wasn't what we were there to talk about. It was this idea of we, we have a gap between our, our current plan and the, the next city plan that we identified at our strategic meeting that was important. We allocated money in the budget. We held several public meetings. We got a, you know, vetted the, the consultant. And we had quite a few reality checks along the way to say that we were on the right page, that we were heading in the right direction. So I'm not a big fan of moratorium. I've taken more than a couple of black eyes, and I only have two eyes to deal with on the whole concept of what we're talking about tonight. Really just trying to make sure that we can get into where we can address our vision. In our downtown plan, and as Brian pointed out, it's, we do feel like this is a plan for success. I have heard I was accused of being a dreamer and that there are dreamer businesses, and if that is a term. That you would like to apply to me, then I'm, I'm fine with that. Um, I've been called worse, and I actually think the dreamers, okay. Um, entrepreneurs will tell you to a T that, um. After doing their due diligence, it is a dream that. Uh, propels them forward and and it it, um, starting a business to me was like buying my my house. It is one of the scariest and most exhilarating things that you can ever do. Um, now, I'm sure that there's going to be plenty of other things that can that, um, who round out that that particular analogy. The other thing was, um, the lack of or the perceived lack of communication. Our obligations for communication are, um, you know, notices in the paper and, um, I guess flyers as needed. I do also concede that my, uh. Something as weighty as this, especially when it comes to the downtown plan. That we are obligated and owe it to our, not only to our citizens, but those shareholders that have made any of these discussions possible. That we are, um, we have a duty to make sure in matters as weighty as this. That we go over and above to make sure that they hear that their opinion matters and we would love to hear what they have to say. So that is something that I'll make a commitment tonight that, um, and several of you have already chimed in. Please include me on any information going forward and you can count on that. But like I said, between some sit down meetings that I'm putting together and just putting together a list of people that we think. Need to be informed because. This downtown plan is kind of a big deal. And we were working on the assumption that we had public support. Because up until now, all of our reality checks have come out with a positive feedback. So if this communication has been insufficient to get your buy in. Then that is something that we, I, the city, the staff, we are going to rectify. And make sure that not only are you notified, but are encouraged to participate. Because like I said, this, this particular project is way too important to stand behind, we did what we were supposed to. This is something that we need to do more than that, so for that, I will take responsibility to make sure that 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 communication style is going to be much, much better. The discussions that I've had is. The, to just to try to appease some of your fears. The toggling back and forth is not, is not, um, between business and residence is not a topic that. I want to hinge a downtown plan on personally. I believe that if that's your pro, if that's your house in, um, I read Rick and Jen's letter last, last month. If they decided that they wanted to rent out that house to another business or just turn it back into a residence. And go be ski bums for a few years and then come back and retire in their house or business or both. They absolutely should be entitled to do that. So the discussion that I had with Rick is, I get the fact that you are entitled to do what you want with your house, and I fully support that. What I'd like to discuss with you is what happens when you're ready to sell. So that, and then to Monica's point, being grandfathered in in catastrophic events, we have rules in place about if something. Catastrophic happens to your home, there are, we cannot make changes without, without, uh, within a certain amount of time. So, um, that is something that I I fully agree with as well. Uh, what else is on my list here? The vitality and the livability. I firmly believe and I, and I hope that this vision has been communicated all through this process. That the downtown is a crown jewel of our town and it's a most, one of the most important things for the vitality. And the livability of Stevenson and finding a way to to. To promote downtown, for example, mixed use, having some high density housing on the, on the fringes. This will bring customers to our downtown, this will bring foot traffic to town, this will. Encourage businesses to stay open later, this will also, um, create a vibe and a hum that is palpable. So that the intentions are. We're not trying to hide anything, the intentions are good, that's where we are trying to make sure that this town will grow in a pattern that we want. That it's not going to, that it's not going to grow on, uh. Uncontrollably, so, um, this, this thought that. This town has always been, will always be, I'm not comfortable with that, I, I think that this town has lots of opportunity and lots of. Room to 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 keep our small town feel, grow the way we want to and make downtown something that we can all be proud of. Thank you. Does anybody else want to take the mic?
I'd like to just say something, and that is, number one, I'm getting really tired. So, um, I'm going to limit my comments to somewhat unusual. Um, but I think, I think this toggling back and forth is really important and. My reading of the moratorium has, there's nothing in there that talks about. The toggling back and forth between.
Hundred percent correct.
Residences and businesses, so I want to repeat that because I feel like that's a crucial point that people are. Somehow not hearing or that got confused at the beginning. Um, perhaps in the way it was presented, I'm not sure what has led to all of this confusion, but. Um, we're not talking about removing anybody's ability to, um. To to change from a residence to a business or a business to a residence and back and forth. What we're talking about is not allowing new single family construction at this point in time and, um. Maybe I'm wrong, but from my perspective, that makes all of you who have single family homes downtown, it actually makes your property more valuable. Because it means that nobody else can come in and build a new single family home, they're going to have to purchase one. If they want to live in a single family home downtown, they're going to have to purchase one that already exists. So I'm, uh, I guess that's just my opinion, but I'm a little bit confused. About the public fear over, uh, a moratorium that that doesn't have anything to do with the toggling.
And I apologize for even bringing that back into the mix because that was my whole tirade last month, it's like, what are we missing here? What am I missing here, there's nothing in this moratorium that has anything to do with that. But because I, um, had an opportunity to address some of the concerns and it, I guess I didn't do a good enough job of saying, that's not what we're talking about today. This moratorium is not intended to be the end all be all, the fact that we're talking about it again, it irks me, I said this, uh, because we, unfortunately. We, we had an opportunity to get to go through this in the proper method and not ruled by moratorium. So, um, I'm anxious to get through. The moratorium as quickly as possible, and I really hope that it would have been done and we would not, we would not be having this conversation tonight, so thank you for your comments, Amy. Anybody else?
Amy, what I've gathered, um, to to answer your question is there's something that has been or will be coming in front of planning that. Um, is getting bled into this whole scenario, um. So to Scott's point, we're talking about this one piece, but there's other pieces that's getting, uh, merged in the whole idea of, uh, city council. For all intents and purposes meddling in the makeup of the downtown, um. Organization of of single family versus business and so, um, yes, so that there's a bit of a blending of the two right now in people's minds.
And I would like to say that I I spoke with one of the people who wrote an objection letter at the last meeting. And this person said that after listening in on council's meeting. That they were no longer, that their mind had been changed, that they were now in favor of the moratorium. Uh, at least for the time being, so it, uh. Some people were swayed.
I'm sorry, Paul, you cannot speak for other people, if they have an opinion, they can come to the meeting and address that opinion. And none of us that spoke, I believe, were talking about business to home or home to business, it was you all that brought up that topic. Uh, I think the majority of people don't want this moratorium for new housing, here.
Mary, you've made your, your, your point very clear and I really appreciate your thoughts, but, um, as Amy pointed out, that's meeting is going long and, um, I have closed public comments at this time, thank you.
Then you shouldn't talk much.
Uh, Scott, hey, if I wouldn't mind, you know, you and I have been on opposite sides of this situation because. I'm not in favor of what the ultimate resolution is, but I'm in favor of the moratorium. So we can get to a piece of paper that has all of the details, that's where Brian, Monica, uh, you know. Even Mary, who doesn't have a house downtown, but has her concerns. What we're doing is simply saying, slow down, let us evaluate. The final document hasn't even been, you know, crafted. So there is, at this point, the biggest concern was the McCloskey's. And I was in favor of them building a house because it was a house, I lost my vote, that's fine, that's how we work. And it's moved on, so, but the moratorium issue is not the end of the day for this discussion. I don't know why we're spending time on the, the fighting over the language of the, of the resolution to extend the moratorium, well, you need to fight over the ultimate language. That's going to be in the document that we create, and that's where Brian and Monica and everybody that has a house or a business. In the downtown C one corridor should have their input, I wholly agree with that. So my only other comment was, the resolution as drafted doesn't refer to the date of the initial moratorium, which was in December. So I don't know if that find, it's, it'd be in the whereas provision. But when we initially imposed the moratorium, we did it at a December meeting, special meeting.
It expired.
I'm sorry, and then it expired, so what, are you saying that this only addresses the second vote, which was in May?
This addresses the most recent expired moratorium, yes.
Alright, didn't know if we needed to have that clear in the document so that we knew the the history of the moratorium itself. So those are my comments, thank you, Scott.
Entertain a motion?
Um, and then I just want to give Annie a chance to weigh in real quick.
I don't have anything to add, thank you, Scott.
Thank you, Annie, yes, I would entertain a motion at this point.
Motion of pre-resolution twenty twenty three sixty four adopting the findings of fact to support ordinance twenty twenty eleven fifty eight.
I'll second.
Alright, we have a first and a second, um, one more chance for a discussion. All, um, actually, I'm going to, I want to make sure I do rule, I was remiss, um, if you could say yay or nay as I go down the the roll call here, Amy.
Yay.
Robert.
Yay.
Paul.
Yay.
Annie.
Yay.
And Matthew.
No.
Thank you, all of you, very much. Alright, let's see what we can do with the rest of our agenda here. Uh, COVID update, Leona has been doing a great job of sending out updates, and I hope that you guys find that a valuable use of your time and hers. By the way, um, are the, the, the meetings with all of the various agencies. Because of the lack of anything substantial changing outside of, you know, advancing through the different phases, the meetings have gone to every other week. From the, from the original every day, so, um, luckily, there's still that, we, we don't have that urgency that we had initially. Um. I have heard that, and I don't, I don't remember if it was somebody, it was. The, the, um, the governor was talking about that he didn't see anybody making it to phase four before twenty twenty one, and that's really disheartening. To be, to make it this far and then get some news like that, and that's really rough news for our businesses. And especially that the employees that are affected and of course, you know, the, the resulting hit to the economy. So we're definitely keeping an eye on that part, but I don't want to spend too much more time on that unless you guys had some specific questions. For Leona because she has been, uh, very much plugged into the whole process as far as the, um, command structure goes. Okay, um. Surpland update, Carl did provide a, a report for you, um, Carl, can you touch on some, just some thumbnails for us?
Hey, Scott, if, Carl, if you wouldn't also just throw in real quick, just the Russell Street where you are, so we get both of them at the same time and then move on.
That sounds like a great idea.
Yes, I'll make it quick, uh, everything's looking really good down the wastewater treatment plant, please note that in the report, it states June. Uh, it should have said May as far as the BOD loading is for June meeting, but it was for May. Um, we are dealing with the settleability, poor settle, settleability still, the report is in there. A couple of, two different types of filamentous bacteria, uh, that we've got to work with, and we're currently doing that and awaiting results. Russell Street, uh, hopefully you guys have been getting my updates.
Hey, Ben, slide to the side a little bit so they can see that nice photo behind you. There we go.
There we go, I'll just do the rest of the report like this for Russell Street, so, um, Russell Street, uh. Coming ahead, we're going to see where there's, uh, we're going to have a couple of, um, change orders to approve. Uh, we can go through that at that time, or do you want to do that now, I don't care. But long story short, we are still on track as of today to make it to substantial completion. Uh, by seven two, right before, uh, Fourth of July holiday. That is the gist of Russell Street right now.
Which is almost a full six weeks ahead of the big orange sign at the end of town.
Copy that.
And since Carl's did that, uh, Mr. Mayor, if you wouldn't mind, if I can jump down then to subsection E on, uh. New, new matter and simply make a motion to approve the two change orders. I am shocked with all the change orders we have. Nine thousand bucks plus, yeah, on this project, Carl, you did a fabulous job.
Oh, hold on, hold on, that's not all of it, I mean, there's going to, there are, uh, potential change orders coming, but these are the only two that we have to date. Uh, there isn't, there were just a heads up, as of today, there will be one more for twenty seven hundred, twenty seven fifty, I believe it was, and that was for. Something that was built correct, uh, it was built to plan, but just looking at it, it does not look right. And if anybody goes down there, you'll notice the ADA ramp on the bottom of Russell where it meets Railroad Street looks. Funny, and I, and I think it's going to carry through to the pavement, we, we took a really hard look at it today. And we made a twenty seven hundred dollar change to add some more asphalt. Uh, Railroad Street further to the west, it's going to be a better product.
So you, you match your cross slope and your running slopes will work out better?
Yeah, trying, yes, yeah.
That's fine, yeah, no, again, for the size of the project, the amount of the change order is.
Oh, and, uh, the good news, there was a contingency built in that did not come to bear.
Two, uh, one was a rock clause, they didn't run into any rocks, so we're looking at a, a potential fifty seven hundred dollars saved there. And then also, it was outlined on a sewer, on a sewer pipe that needed to be ductile iron, we were able to get enough depth. And cover with a sidewalk where it doesn't have to be ductile iron for a savings of twenty eight hundred dollars.
Deductive change orders are coming our way.
Copy that, and then also there, there'll probably be a savings on, uh, flagging as well, since we were able to shut mid block down. So honestly, it's looking good, there, there has been some hiccups, uh, don't get me wrong, but no, it's all, all good.
Down to one, one wooden pole, the ballots are going in for the decorative lights, this is.
One, one wooden pole that's slated to come out, if you saw my report, I'm going to say soon, and that's, uh, that's contractor soon. So. It'll be down.
And then now, did you make a motion already, Robert, am I stopping right over that?
That's exactly what I was going to, I have motion to approve the Russell Avenue project change orders one and two. In the combined amount of eight thousand four hundred sixty eight dollars and eighty cents. For revised total contract amount of seven hundred and twenty one thousand four twenty six forty five. And Wallace Engineering supplemental agreement number five in the amount of nine thousand nine hundred seventy four dollars sixty three cents. For a total revised contract amount of three hundred and fifteen thousand seven oh three eighty six, Leona, you couldn't have made that shorter?
Back end.
So, okay, we have a first and a second, is there, uh, any further discussion?
I did have a question on the, um, let's see. On the first change order to adjust the onion support due to the new sidewalk, what, and obviously, you know, Carl, you came into this. Well, you know, halfway through, but, um, any understanding of why that wasn't, uh, you know, addressed at the beginning?
It was, uh, the original plan was to simply have it buried in the concrete and that I had, that's not a good way to go. Uh, this way, there, there was discussion of put bolting a plate down so it could be removable. Which is essentially what ended up happening, we just put it on top of the concrete. which is essentially what ended up happening. We just put it on top of the concrete, sinking, it's steel. It's, it's a steel awning. Uh, that's why this change order was, was brought, brought about.
Okay, um, roll call, yay or nay? Amy?
Sorry, yay.
Robert?
Yay.
Paul?
Hey.
Annie?
Yay.
And Matthew?
No.
All right, thank you guys very much. Um, Carl, do you have anything else?
I've got another one on here to approve the WAWORN. Uh, this came on early on. I mentioned it when COVID first came out. Um, and this is basically a, a mutual aid agreement with all water and wastewater, uh, treatment plants, water, uh, wastewater treatment plants in the state of Washington. Uh, originally, we were looking at this due to potentially losing staff members. Um, and we will, we would be able to tap into other cities to borrow theirs, essentially. We could borrow equipment. They could borrow ours. It's a, it's a large mutual aid agreement. What, what do you got, Robert?
Is it mutual aid or just an interlocal to share?
Uh, either or. It's mutual aid, but more or less.
Okay. I, I didn't see it on there. Which, where is it on there?
Uh, page fi, let me click out of a couple of screens here, page fifty.
It's like four oh, four oh five on my document.
I was just on fifty-three.
I got four, I got four oh five, too.
Okay.
Do you need that tonight?
No, please read through it. Uh...
Table that, Leona, if we need a vote, just so I can read it.
That's fine if it's tabled.
Okay, so we will move on from that one. Anything else, Carl?
I believe that's it for me on here. Nah.
Oh.
I see a transportation improvement plan.
Okay, well, so yeah, we'll just, we'll just, um, start, um, knocking these out. Um, so unless you guys have some more questions for Carl, um, because he has been doing a great job on both fronts. So if you have some questions to give him a chance to talk about what a great job they're doing down there, I'd be fine. Okay, uh, let's see here. Leona, ecology loan amendment two.
So I still haven't seen the, um, amendment, but again, in our system, um, it is approved. And last time it took a week or so between when they approved the amendment in the system and when, um, we got it for authorization. Um, so again, this is just for council approval to, um, extend the contract, um, in essence, another year, um, because we're not quite done with the design, no other changes to that ecology loan.
I'll be happy to make a motion if you're ready, Scott.
Go for it.
Motion to authorize the mayor to sign ecology loan, WQC two oh one nine, Steve PW zero zero four four amendment two.
Second.
All right, we have a first and a second. Any other discussion? Uh, roll call, Amy, yay or nay?
Yay.
Robert?
Yay.
Paul?
Yay.
Annie?
Yay.
And Matthew?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, we, we lost you on, on your vote there, Matthew.
Uh, yay, yes.
Thank you. All right, thank you guys very much for that. Um, let's see, tell us about Leona.
So the next one is the, um, license agreement amendment with BRG, just, um, as discussed at the last council meeting. Um, it's, uh, basically states that if, um, they have to shut down their outdoor dining due to COVID, then they don't have to pay their, then their rent for the space for Walnut Park is prorated. And that's, that's it.
I, I have a question on this one.
Go for it.
Uh, so I, I remember there was discussion last month and Matthew had some concerns. And I was trying to assuage his concerns by saying, well, last year, Justin didn't use that whole park and some of it was still available for the public, but this year, that's not the case. So...
Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt. I, let, let me let you finish before I jump in. Sorry about that.
No, go ahead, Scott.
Oh, because I, I was just there this afternoon and that the, the path that's on the east side of the park is, that was there last year, is still there. The, the, um, the area up at the top by the, by the stairs is, is still there. I don't, I don't remember seeing a table there per se. If, but, um, the, the space that was unused by him was still there today.
So, I mean, I'm not, I, I am not a fan of the agreement, but the agreement is already in place. And I think this is a very fair, uh, you know, compromising, and if it's not used, I shouldn't have to pay for it. Um, so since it's already in place, you know, I, I'm not, I'm not concerned about this.
Do you think it's possible to ask Justin to put, maybe it's not, maybe it's not, I don't know what's legal and what's not, like, can we have a, a table or a couple of chairs, like, outside of his fenced-in area so that the public can, can choose to sit down and, like, eat their lunch or whatever if they want?
That, that is theirs. When, when I walked by, uh, last week, I haven't walked by this week. Um, there were a couple of tables, um, with an umbrella outside the roped off area.
That's what I wanted to make sure of. Okay, I was not seeing that, but maybe I didn't look closely enough. Thank you.
Isn't the bench there, too, that's just, um, right around the corner? Yeah. I mean, there's a bench there and then a bench in front, right?
My concern is that if we're not noticing it, probably the public isn't either. So do residents even know that it's available for them to use outside of Big River Grill's business? I mean, should there be signage?
Yeah, thank you, Annie.
I, I can talk to him about that. But then, um, a, and I can, I'll, I'll talk with Justin more about how that is being, um, used and advertised and whether or not they're including that in their, um, cleaning rotation due to COVID.
Yeah, my concern is that the perception is that, you know, one business in town might be getting, um, the use of, of space that others aren't getting. And so if we could just make it clear that there is still public, uh, still public use area there, I think that would, that would help me.
I'm not a fan of more signage. I think we got enough sign pollution downtown. So just my comment.
Have, have you heard from any businesses, Annie, about concerns relating to that?
No, I haven't. It's just an observation I've made for like the last year. I'm just wondering how they even got the approval to use that space in the first place. But as Matthew said, since it's already in place, there's not much I can do about that. But no, to answer your question, no, Amy.
So this was a space that was, um, I wouldn't call it disrepair, but was rarely used. And it was sitting right outside that restaurant, and you can't blame them for being geographically convenient to an open space that it was, it's better than it just sitting there covered up with nothing going on. The fact that he's brought some new life to that park, I think, is, is great in, we, we're trying to be pro-business. Um, you know, making sure that, we talked about this last month, too, making sure that if there was anything that we can do, especially with right-of-way to help the businesses, then we should, you know, it be, um, acceptable of that, or ready to do that.
Thank you, Scott.
Um, okay, so I would entertain a motion.
Uh, I'm happy to make the motion. I don't see, I'm not able to scroll quickly enough for the wording, but I'm making a motion to approve the amended licensing agreement with, uh, Justin and Big River Grill. That's good enough.
Yes, it is. All right, I have a first and a second. Any other discussion on this matter?
The, uh, the agreements just through this year, or how many years was it?
Agreement ends this year.
Just curious, thanks.
All right, roll call, Amy?
Hi.
Robert?
Hi.
Paul?
Hi.
Annie?
Hi.
Matthew?
Hi.
Thank you very much. All right, the Leona, social media use policy.
So I forgot to add this in last month when I mentioned it in my staff report. Um, but we now have Facebook page and, um, we've been trying to undo the comments on the Facebook page. We're not able to, um, figure that on a very consistent basis. Um, we have tickets into Facebook and, of course, their response time is, is different. Um, and so, uh, this is just, uh, setting up a policy for when we accept comments and then also how we manage the Facebook page and any other social media we choose to use in the future.
Ken, is there any, I know that we have obligations for advertising meetings. Is there anything that says you shouldn't do it a certain way, or is it just the, the obligation to, to advertise the meetings?
Yeah, you, uh, you have a minimum requirement for, um, publishing and posting notices of meetings. But you can always exceed that and posting meeting notices on so, social media is, is encouraged just because some people use social media. And the, the goal is to make, to, to make sure that publish, uh, public is apprised of meetings to the greatest extent possible because we always, of course, want to encourage public participation at our meetings to the greatest extent feasibly possible. So, uh, it's not, it cannot be to the exclusion of other types of, uh, required publishing, uh, whatever we have in our code. But we can always add to that.
Great.
Just on that, to piggyback that, um, have, have we done any, um, reporting at some point to kind of see the distribution of, say, the Colombian versus the Pioneer?
I think the Pioneer is our, uh, newspaper of record. So that's what, what we're required to put it in the Pioneer unless the council was to, to either instruct staff to duplicate the publication, uh, with the Colombian. There's a, there's a higher cost with the Colombian, but, um, or you could desti, designate the Colombian as the paper of record. That's another choice, because it is a regional paper, so that's, that's the, that's up to the council.
I was just curious if they're, yeah, just as far as getting the word out to the most people. I was just curious.
Okay, um, I would entertain a motion to approve the resolution.
Motion to approve Resolution 2020 dash three sixty-three, adopting a social media policy?
We have a first and a second. Is there any further discussion?
My only comment is the resolution has a date of May twenty-first on there. Does that need to change, Leona?
Yeah, I'll, I'll make that update. Sorry.
So do we need a new motion with the change?
No, she's just gonna change the date.
Okay, uh, roll call, Amy?
Hi.
Robert?
Hi.
Paul?
Hey.
Annie?
Hi.
And Matthew?
Hi.
All right. Now, um, let's do, let's do G, well, let's finish up the... Do we have any other thing to vote on? Like, yeah, there's one more, two more motions. Let's get through the motions first and then we'll circle back to these other items. All right, so H, affordable, approve affordable housing sales tax credit.
So this, um, council started this in motion, uh, last year when we adopted a resolution of intent to, um, collect the sales tax credit, uh, that was authorized by House Bill fourteen oh six. Uh, this ordinance, um, finalizes it and, um, it has to be adopted by Jul, the end of July um, in order for us to take advantage of it. And it's, would be, um, to collect the, the tax for twenty years unless, um, the legislature, the legislation changes. But this is, again, it's a sales tax credit, so it's not any additional funds that the residents pay, but it's a credit on the six and a half percent sales tax that goes to the state.
Motion to approve ordinance, uh, twenty twenty eleven fifty-nine, authorizing the maximum capacity of a local sales and use tax fund invested, Jesus Christ.
Right, yeah.
And the Coroner's of Street House, fill fourteen oh six, chapter three, three, eight, laws of twenty nineteen and adding chapter three, ten, sales and use tax for affordable housing as presented with changes.
Oh, no, just as presented.
Second.
All right, we have a first and a second. Any other discussion?
Yeah, I have a question. What is the accountability going to be on our end to make sure that this fund, that these funds are used for this designated purpose?
So it'll be audited on an annual basis, um, within our, our typical audit run. Um, there's a separate fund that'll be used for it. Um, if we partner with any agency on it, those clauses will, and those requirements will flow down to them. Um, you know, i- if we partner with a county on it or, or anything along those lines, um, that, that would flow down.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Amy?
Hi.
Robert?
Hi.
Paul? Hit us again. Your mi, your mic kicks in late. There we go. Thank you. Annie?
Hi.
Matthew?
Hi.
Thank you very much. Um, all right, item I.
So this one...
Contract amendment.
Yeah, so for, um, some random reason, I had to look back in the minutes to see when we approved the walking man tourism funding contract. Um, amendments to, from Fools Fest to the twentieth anniversary event. Um, it was in the council packet, um, for the March meeting, but it was not in the minutes. In the minutes, you basically re-approved everything that was approved in December. Um, and so, um, in, in the minutes and in the meeting and everything, and, and it wasn't caught until now. So that's what this is. It's just to approve the amendment to the walking man agreement. Changing their, the date. So they didn't have it in April. Um, they had already made the decision not to hold it in Ap, the Fools Fest in April for, because they're having a twentieth anniversary event in fall. Uh, with COVID, it ended up working out.
I'll make a motion to approve the amendment to the walking man agreement regarding Fools Fest. Second.
All right, we have a first and a second. Any other discussion? All right, roll call, Amy?
Hi.
Robert?
Hi.
Paul?
Hi.
Annie?
Hi.
And Matthew?
Hi.
Thank you very much. All right, it looks like we're done with voting matters.
Date it for a council retreat.
That's, uh, well, that's what I'm circling back to on that. Um, I would like to get back to the council retreat. I'm not sure what it's gonna look like, though. Um, I don't know if we're gonna be able, so after July first is when we decide, we can figure out if we can even be in the same room. Is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah. Or if it's in it, yeah.
Well, I'm not a hundred percent in love with trying to get a lot of, getting that retreat done on, in this format, but it, I do feel that it's important that we do, um, set some priorities. Although if it was for this year, we're, we're kind of into it. So, um, obviously, if we can't meet in person, then that meeting will be truncated. I think that initially it was a six-hour session, like, is that right? Like a nine to three? So, um...
Would there be an objection to an outdoor venue for it rather than indoor?
Bring the whiteboard.
It's the Public Open Public Meetings Act. It doesn't matter where it's held. We can't have an open public meeting in person.
Got it.
Um, all right, how about if we, uh, schedule a meeting and, um, if the governor decides that it's still not a good idea, then we'll reevaluate it at that time. Um, Saturdays are preferred, obviously, because of the time chunk involved. So hopefully you guys still have your calendars open. Um, I do think that if we get any later than July, I think, I think that, well, I take that back. I think that the, the opportunity to meet and discuss these matters is, is, is important, even if the, the timeliness is, um, didn't work out that way. So, um, let's look at, uh, obviously, the third would be, uh, or the fourth would be a, a rough choice to throw out there. But, um, I've got eleventh, eighteenth, and twenty-fifth. I don't see anything in my calendar on any of those days. Um, the eighteenth would be right after council.
I'm not available on the eighteenth, but I am on the eleventh.
As am I.
Works.
All right.
Eleventh is good for me.
If you guys could, uh, put a hold on your calendars, uh, July, Saturday, the eleventh, from nine until three. Location and format TBD.
You said nine?
Nine to three, yes, sir.
Whatever reason.
So, and what do we have? So in what do we have? We have to vote on that?
The transportation. Oh, no, that's consensus. Sorry.
Okay, so no motion for that.
No, no motion.
All right, and then Carl with our Transportation Improvement Program.
That's just for your review.
So there'll be a public hearing at the next council meeting to to go over it in depth.
Okay, so item J. The Columbia River Gorge Management Plan.
I forwarded an email to council about a public meeting that they're holding on the twenty-fifth as well with more information.
Yeah, as I briefly touched on at the last meeting, the Gorge Commission is doing their, I think it's a ten-year requirement to update the plan, and this will be the first time they've done that in twenty years or so. So they are getting very close. They have a public comment draft available in the last stages of preparing the public comment draft. I submitted and several of the other planning staff and other from other communities in the gorge submitted some comments, hoping that they would change the public release draft. They didn't change that and and just moved into this general public comment acceptance phase. So the comments that I provided the last time were solely based on the urban area boundary revision process. That's really the only interaction that we have with the Gorge Commission, other than dealing with knock-on effects, side effects of that. So with the suggestions that any for the minor amendments, this would be including the remainder of public rights away and utility rights away that were used for the original boundaries. I also included some comments on the the standards that are used to then review the other types of amendments that aren't specifically called out. So the most egregious one that I saw in my mind is that as a standard of review, they were taking an Oregon administrative rule, something that's created by the executive branch within the Oregon government, applying those to urban area boundary revisions on both sides of the border. And so the suggestion there was that if those rules are appropriate for both sides, reference them in full now and update them based on the Gorge Commission's action for updates, not leave them to the whim of the Oregon executive branch. The other issue that I had identified in that is the timing of amendments. The current proposal says periodic review conducted under the State's Growth Management Act or essentially under the Growth Management Act. Well, we're not subject to that. And so if they keep it that way, then they're effectively saying that we won't see an urban area boundary revision reviewed by the Gorge Commission until we either voluntarily begin fully planning under the Growth Management Act or we're compelled to based on our growth or population size. So wanted them to make some changes. I've provided specific red lines for them on that. I will continue to do that, submit it during this official public comment period and would welcome any discussion that you guys have now or offline to see if there's anything else that's really concerning and help write a letter out for the city for that.
Ben, I'd like to take you up on that offer, please, to have a sidebar conversation. Specifically, my concerns are around trains and coal and climate change.
Okay.
They're adding a whole chapter on climate change.
Finally.
Okay, thanks for the update, Ben. It looks like, well, actually, we do have a little bit of business left. Okay. I hope that you guys, Leona did email out the plaza agreement. Have you guys had a chance to explore? Anybody?
Is that the one that I sent comments on?
Yeah, so you sent comments in and then Matthew and Ken also provided some comments. So part of the reason why it's coming back is because I just want clarification from council on a path forward with regards to some potential conflicts in the comments. So one. So one request from Matthew was that basically the county provide, was it deeds or gives the property to the city? And I think that then changes some of the dynamics within the contract. So that was one of the major ones I wanted council to talk about. One of the concerns I have with that was in the in the conversation that we had with the joint meeting with the planning commissioner or with the county commissioners, they were adamantly opposed to deeding the property because it's their front lawn and the activities that occur right there could potentially disrupt when they have court or other proceedings within their offices.
Oh, I would I would say that during the joint meeting, that wasn't necessarily the sentiment. It might have been afterwards. But then secondly, I feel that it's worked into the contract that gives the county a say in some of the activities that happen so that it can't go on during court, as you listed. So I feel that kind of negates that concern.
Well, my only comment would be is the county can't, I mean, we'd have to pay them. I mean, they can't give us that land for free under, you know, public gift.
They can. Agency to agency, agency to agency, they can. It's only it's only to individuals, citizens, that agency can gift to another agency, but.
We tried to get the other property from them. They said, hell, no. When we tried to get our access, well, they said, hell, no. So, yeah.
I don't see that happening, but that's it's not unconstitutional.
So I think it would be great if they gave us the property, but there's no way that I want to derail this project in hopes that they will.
I guess my concern is just after the thirty years, I can't remember what the term was. It can be pulled and that's you know, the point is they would have developed or sold it if they could have. They haven't or chose not to. They want us to manage it on a day-to-day basis. The least they can do is give it, you know, a limited deed, you know, for the use as prescribed. You know, if that changes, then it would revert back. Since they're not providing, you know, any any funds or labor to this, that that is the compromise in my mind.
Sure, but they are giving us first right of refusal if they do sell it. And I think that's a good thing.
Or they could pull it and sell it later.
Thirty years from now, it's not likely.
And so I guess that's the the main question as to whether it's a thirty-year agreement or whether it's in essence, deeded to the city or given to the city in some way, shape, or form until the city decides to discontinue use or the county proves that the city has failed to adequately hold up its end of the bargain.
Or hell, if they don't want to deed it, then make it, you know, a hundred years or whatever. Something more lengthy is, I guess, what's more on my radar.
And the whole idea, though, I mean, if they deed us the property, we don't need a maintenance agreement with them. It's our property then. So this document just goes away.
I think it's our obligation to at least ask if they would deed us the property rather than just assume that they won't.
But again, that's, I mean, I can ask them again, but it was brought up at the joint meeting that we had.
Okay, so I wasn't at that joint meeting, so I don't know that.
You just want the commissioners to send us something in writing as to their decision on that?
Well, I'm gonna send them back a draft and so.
No, I was asking Annie if, I mean, do you want something in writing from the commissioner saying this is our response to your request? I mean, I don't disagree with you. I'm just asking if that's sort of closed the loop, whether it's a yay or a nay.
No, as long as it had already been, I didn't realize that it had already been discussed, so that was, as long as it has been, then that satisfies me.
Okay, anybody else?
I would just ask for a longer timeframe if we're not looking to move forward with the beating.
What would your proposal be there?
Hundred years, hundred fifty.
Ninety-nine years. I don't, I mean, I don't think they're gonna care one way or another how long it is, because everybody's got a thirty-day out, isn't it?
Well. Yeah, that, I don't know about all that. Guess what? Thanks for doing all this. We'll have it back now.
And that that was my concern, yeah.
All right, if that's, you know, if that's the way we couch that, that this the severance part of it.
So there is no early termination of this agreement.
I see that now, yeah.
Okay, do you have what you need, Leona?
So consensus is to get a longer agreement?
Well, I, yeah, the longer the better, of course, but I'm satisfied with thirty years.
I as well.
I say longer.
I I don't see any reason not to ask for longer.
Okay.
Very good.
Thank you, Lea.
Or.
I don't think we did the consent agenda, did we?
Yeah, that was up at the top. Okay, Carl. Did more more for your staff report? Are you good?
I'm good.
All right.
I didn't put Ben on there because I didn't know if he was gonna stay on this long. So if you wanted to.
A little bit on the water side of things. We're still just keep Pagoable on the radar. We're still moving forward with that as far as moving out from an emergency backup to source, regular source. And then we had a leak detection service come in as part of our water use efficiency goal, and I put them on some of our older lines throughout the city and I hate saying surprisingly, but they did not find any leaks. So that's good news.
All right, Leona, did you have you have one report attached?
Yeah, I have a report attached. I have a couple of things to add.
Hyperlink.
Yeah.
Okay.
So one, one thing, there was an email that went out just encouraging people to fill out the census because our response is currently low. Anders added some more information to the Facebook page and on the last time the bills went out and encouraged people to fill out the census. So if you talk to people, just, we don't get the postcards mailed to us. They haven't done the door-to-door yet, but you can just go online. I've done it myself and fill it out.
Why don't the postcards get mailed?
Because we have PO boxes and not physical addresses, and so they don't mail, they only mail them to physical addresses. They don't mail them to PO boxes.
Because I say, because I got one, but then I have a mailbox, so.
Yeah. Yes. So the audit is wrapping up, and so we have some dates for the exit conference. Does anyone, first question, who all wants to attend the exit conference for the audit?
It's riveting, I have to tell you. It is such a barrel of monkeys. I'm not lying.
Citulating.
The question, reason why I ask is whether or not it's a public meeting. And so, so Matthew and Scott, I can email you the list of times and days that are available. And then we can go from there and nail it down. Prior to this meeting from four to six, I had a MCDAD board meeting, and so they're looking for ways to improve diversity and inclusion to actively serve all the populations in the gorge, kind of in in response to the the
Black Lives Matter.
I don't even know how to describe it right now. Recent events.
The Matter Movement.
Yeah, yes. And so they're they're looking to do to to look at their policies and their practices to see how they can better serve everyone. What?
What group?
Mid-Columbia Economic Development District. And great news, we'll find out in the fall if Skamania County receives a grant that will fill in the gap for transportation between Stevenson and the and the west and the east side of of the towns. So basically, it will take, the route will be from Stevenson Carson to Bingen because right now there's no way to get from here to Bingen, White Salmon, or Hood River, or the Dows, or anywhere east on public transportation. You can only go to Clark County. So that would be great news to, again, connect us, not only not only our residents east, but have any residents or tourists or anyone there that's doing a car-free vacation, come to Stevenson. With the, so the meter upgrade is is done and we uploaded all of the meter reads into the system, so that's going really well. With that whole project, in my council report, there were about thirteen bill or thirteen customers that had an incorrect meter size being billed versus what was in the ground. And so one question I have, and I didn't ask Kenda for this, but Ken, is there a way to just waive the back billings or and just start it clean fresh and adjust their accounts now? Or do we have to charge them the?
An auditor would look at that to determine whether the the cost of back billing exceeds what your return would be. So if that's the case, then they would understand your declining to back bill. The council will have to approve that at least on consent. But in order to avoid a some sort of gift of funds, the city would have to have some analysis that establishes that the city's not going to derive any benefit from doing that.
Do you waive when people have leaks? Is it come down to the dollar amount?
Leak leak adjustment is through a policy that you guys establish. And and so, and that's that's a balancing act for forgiveness for an unanticipated event, which a leak is. So that's a council policy decision. It's done in advance, so you can't do it in arrears. You have to always set the policy and then apply the policy. And but this is a little different kind of issue. It's really a cost-benefit analysis to make sure the city, the auditor would not want the city to spend more to achieve a result than what you would get from it. That's that's not a requirement that the auditor would impose on the city. But we have to, we have to go through that analysis.
So part of the challenge that I have right now with this is so the two, so this, if I go back to the beginning of twenty eighteen to to do this this back billing, there's a large impact to some organizations such as the Eagles Lodge to the tune of nine thousand dollars. Port of Skamania, another nine thousand dollars, and other businesses, about another twenty-three hundred dollars each. And so imposing that in the time of COVID, when they're already experiencing downed revenues and already having challenges, that's kind of where I'm at with all of this. And so.
Well, okay, I mean, there is an AG opinion and a fairly recent one on essentially giving benefit to businesses during the COVID period. If the city can establish that there is, there is a overall benefit in in, say, waiving a cost, I'll give you a copy of that AG opinion, but the you still have to be careful and and the auditor would probably think more positively at, say, the normal collection for past or for you know, mistaken
you know, mistaken billings where you establish a payment plan. And it could be a very generous payment plan, but that's, that's probably a preferred way to collect those sums. But you know, again, we can look at whether these charges are ones that the city could waive as sort of a general economic benefit because of COVID and look at that AG opinion. That's a possibility.
Okay.
So my, my question is that, you know, as far as forgiveness on some bills, that's something that happened after the meter. That's something that you say that unexpected event on the customer's side where they have unexpected water use and we are in the position to help out on those unexpected events and there's parameters around that. But if it's something that essentially could be said that it was an error on the city's part. So then that's the whole idea is that we're supposed to circle back and say, sorry about that, our bad. But now you need to pay. So that, that's the part that is, is hard to wrap my head around on that part.
Well, if it was truly a city error, then, then that, that's, and there, there's a liability issue and the city could essentially, I mean, we could look at it in terms of you know, a disputed charge. And if we do that, then it's, it's kind of by way of settlement. And the auditor would probably bless that as well. It really comes down to what's the nature of the charge? What's, is the city acting reasonably and not gifting funds?
Because if that's, if we have records that say these are the meters that we have, and we can prove that because those were the, those were the meters that we ordered to replace them. That was what we knew was in the ground. And while it turns out that, that, that record was incorrect, and that's what brought all this to light. Who knows how long that would have gone on if we didn't didn't have to replace them. So I, it's hard to say, okay, well, you did this wrong and that's because of that. This is something that who knows where, what I have a hard time saying from a mistake from who knows when, by whom is going to be somebody is going to be a that we get to go get Teflon on us and say, but now it's time for you to pay for this, this error that has been discovered.
I think this is something that we don't necessarily have to involve the council with at this point. If it's something that needs to come before council at a future meeting, we can do that. But you know, it, this, I'd see Amy yawning. So I don't think we have to involve the council for decision making at this point. Let's look at this and then I'll, once I understand better what's happening, I think I can give a better opinion.
Okay.
And I like that answer. Okay, I would entertain a motion to approve the vouchers.
Motion to approve the vouchers.
The first and the second, is there any other discussion?
I just have to say for the same reason as last month, I feel obligated to vote no due to the additional charges.
Additional charges?
For the maybe LA.
For the which?
For the boundary line adjustment.
Okay. All right. So, all right. Thank you. So roll call. Amy.
Hi.
Robert.
Hi.
Paul.
Hi.
Annie.
Hi.
Matthew. Okay. I'll try to keep this as quick as possible. The SDA has started to meet on ways to reinvigorate downtown. There's been a couple of ideas that were swirling around, nothing really worth bringing because nothing's really been fleshed out yet, but we are trying to, we see this throughout, not just with the downtown association, looking for some ways to for community and economic revitalization and vitality. So keep an eye out for maybe you might be asked to participate in some fashion or another to help with our businesses and their customers and our, and the employees that are working here in town. Does anybody else have any, any reports that they'd like to share for the greater good?
I'll go with just a couple. The Hotel Stevenson project, this is the reuse of the Candy Jones building. The permits for that are in and moving forward. I know that at one meeting, you guys received testimony saying that the city's parking requirements are going to kill that project. It didn't even come close to killing that project. So that's going forward. It looks good. That'll be another 12 keys downtown. Add that to the four for the Art Bliss Hotel across from the hardware store. And if you guys approve the Rock Cove Hospitality, that's 32 keys where they were estimating demand for 100 existing demand for 80 right away. So some of that's coming to pass and the COVID downturn hasn't, hasn't deterred those projects. So that looks good. Planning Commission side, you guys have been down a planning commission member for a couple of months. We have advertised that now. And so at the next meeting, you may have a recommendation and commission to fill that vacancy. They'll also be reviewing a conditional use permit. This one is for establishment of a church in a residential zone. And so if you guys hear about this one or not, I do want you to kind of monitor. This is the reuse of an old church that's been abandoned for a long time. And so if there's frustration there, I want you to think about it in relation to our nonconforming use policies, our grandfathering policies. Right now, if it's abandoned for X period of time, it's just considered abandoned. And if it's ever reused, it needs to be in compliance with the code. That is an unpopular one for many of in your community. They'd rather see just, hey, let it be. This is Stevenson. So if you hear anything there, it's not going to affect this permit and the review of this permit. But maybe we look at changing some of those regs down the road. It's, it's one of those that I think does need to be updated to reflect realities in Stevenson here. And then we'll also continue the discussion of the zoning code. So hopefully the people who have been turning up to these meetings and been vocal will show up to the planning commission. And the planning commission will really hear them and present to you with something that you can act on, as Robert said. So, and Mike, thank you for sticking around the whole meeting.
Anybody else have something to report?
I do. Just, just that the EDC luncheon is going to be turned into a virtual event. It will happen in the fall. Refunds will be offered for those who have already signed up and we're going to, instead of having, you know, an actual luncheon, we're going to offer gift certificates to the local businesses. That's one, one choice that people may elect when they, if they, if they either don't ask for a refund or if they sign up. And another option is to make the luncheon portion a donation to the food bank.
Great. Okay, and anything that, that you as the group would like to see on the next agenda, next regular meeting agenda?
I'd like to make sure, Ben, that you invite by physical mail, if possible, the folks who have been showing up here to that planning commission meeting, please.
I think he's doing that right now. All right. I don't hear any other comments on that portion.
I do have one, Scott. I'm sorry. I would like to see that we do make some kind of a proclamation or something in regards to Juneteenth for next year at least. And going forward.
I'd like to agree with that.
Okay, we can have something put together for you guys to vote on next meeting.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you all very much for your time today and being firm in your resolve. I would like to call a meeting adjourned at 9:25.
Thanks, guys.
Hi, thanks.
Thank you. Bye bye.